Why do you treat your gal that way? I went down the alley other night. Nancy and a man had just had in fight. He beat Miss Nancy across her head. When she rose to her feet, she said, "You low-down alligator, just watch me soon or later. Gonna catch you with your britches down." You abuse me and mislead me. Dog around and beat me. Still, I'm gonna hang around. Take all my money back of both of my eyes. Give it to another woman. Come home and tell me lies. You low-down alligator, just watch me soon or later. Gonna catch you with your britches down. I mean, catch you with your britches down.
The last award presented, and I think probably surprised the person who was here to represent the organization the most, was the Tacoma Spirit Award. And the winner in that category was the Independence Day Committee. And Belle Ziegler, I know, is very pleased with that and is taking the azalea and the T-shirt to the committee. And they're gonna then raffle those off to the volunteers there. So I think it was a very successful event. And I hope it's the successful revival of the event. I think it's the second annual, but the gap between the first and the second was a number of years. I think they're gonna try and make that an annual event and get more participation. So it was very nice. And I just wanted to check with my colleagues and see if it's helpful. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the thick packet of information that I provided behind this memorandum from my various COG meetings last week. I'm gonna try and be a little bit more regular in sharing with all of you any of the information that comes from there, both from the Board and the Emergency Preparedness Council and the Chesapeake Bay Policy Committee. And they had a number of things that were of interest to things that we're interested in. And the one that struck me was the presentation on the Sister Cities Program. It was very timely since we had had information a couple of weeks ago that our old relationship in the Sister City Program was ready to be revived. There was great enthusiasm from all of the various jurisdictions in COG who have that relationship. And we spent a good deal of time talking about how helpful that is. So I wanted to provide as much information as possible to maybe move that along a little bit so that we can revive that relationship. Thank you.
Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I just wanted to give people forewarning of an event that's coming up on June 10th. The Tacoma Park Jazz Fest is gonna show off some odd instruments. They're gonna have a production of odd instruments featuring seven sets at a festival that's gonna be held in Jackie Park over on Fenton Street and Tacoma Avenue in Tacoma Park. The festival's gonna start at 11:00 a.m. This was organized by one of Tacoma Park's most dedicated volunteers, Dave Lorenz. So that was June 10th at 11:00 a.m. till 7:00 p.m. in Jackie Park.
I attended the Friends of Sligo Creek Rain Garden Development. It's a partnership with Friends of Sligo Creek and the city of Tacoma Park. And brought several members of my Girl Scout troop along. And we moved a lot of mulch and planted a lot of good plants that are good at collecting water. And one of the Friends of Sligo Creek gentlemen installed the new sign there so you can kinda see what's going on. So if you haven't seen a rain garden, or you have a lot of water that runs through your property, it's a great demonstration project site, and I encourage you to go check it out.
Just wanted to note that on Saturday, there was a wreath laying in memory of Corporal Ed Totally, who was a Maryland State Trooper who was working with our police department on drug enforcement when he was killed in an undercover investigation. And the memorial, he is one of the namesakes for the Totally-Frazier Park in Word Five. And there was a wreath laying in the park, very nice. There were a number of our officers and quite a large contingent of Maryland State Troopers who attended also. And it was a very nice ceremony. All right, are there any public comments? Since we don't seem to have much public, I think we will assume that there aren't, and we'll move on to the city manager's comments.
Just a few items related to the community center project. As a reminder, the mediation session with James F. Knott will take place next Monday, May 22nd. Most of the items that are the subject of that mediation deal with one particular subcontractor who is the mechanical sub on the project. I did wanna let the council know, I will be out of the office majority of that day. Bob Cox has requested that I be present to provide some information relative to the various items that will be discussed and in the event that any decisions need to be made. So it is a one-day session, as the council may recall, so hopefully we'll have an update for you soon following its conclusion next Monday. Also wanted to update the council on the situation involving the parking lot. As you may recall, it was actually scheduled to be closed last Friday. And as I had mentioned to the council at the conclusion of the work session Thursday evening on the budget, the parties were having a dispute in terms of some of the items related to the parking lot. There was a meeting this morning. Vanita George, our project manager, represented the city. And on the advice of the structural engineer to try to resolve some of the issues, he has recommended, and the parties have agreed, to do some testing in the lot to further discuss exactly the nature of the repairs that are required. That testing will take place on Tuesday and Wednesday. So a portion of the front parking lot will be closed as of 7:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. You may have noticed some rather rudimentary signs up just trying to notify people as they came this evening. Essentially, if you're facing the building, everything to the left of the pedestrian bridge will basically be closed off for at least two days. We'll be, Suzanne Ludlow, I believe, is trying to do some work in terms of the necessary notifications. People will be able to park under the bridge itself, but anything to the left of it, as I mentioned, will be basically off limits for at least two days. The last item I had just had to do with the discussion we had last week, I guess it was last Monday, about possibly installing an elevator cab in the existing shaft. There seemed to be general support from the council about proceeding in that direction. I believe Councilmember Elrich had asked if there was possibly any movement that could be obtained from TRG Construction in terms of some of the general conditions estimates that were included in their original proposal. Following last Monday's meeting, I did speak to TRG, and they have agreed to basically lower some of their staffing costs on the job. The revised price that I just received when I came back to the office today is $179,172. It is a reduction of just over $10,000. So at this point, we do have what I believe is gonna be the final price from TRG Construction for the elevator. As the council is aware, this would be a change order to the contract. Their work is proceeding very rapidly, and substantial completion is expected by, probably in about two weeks, actually, somewhat less than that. So at this point, I think we do need to make a decision so that I can basically give TRG official notification and execute a change order while we actually have a contract to amend. While there seemed to be general support last week, I did wanna give you the revised pricing and so that there's no ambiguity, rather than sort of nodding heads and, you know, generally good comments, that I do have the authority from the council to basically execute that change order on behalf of the city.
Could you also specify where the funding for this project would come from?
Sure. The majority of the expenses I had mentioned in the cover sheet for last week's agenda item would actually take place in '07. So there would be possibly some minimal impact on this year's budget, but it would probably be in the range of $5,000 to $10,000. Most of it would just be the bonding for the additional work. The actual funding for the majority of the expense, which would be in '07, would come from the general fund, fund balance, or reserve, whatever term you're more comfortable with. There have been, there was a private party who has pledged $10,000 towards the installation of the elevator, and then it was kind of a challenge match, if you will. And either the Tacoma Foundation or another private individual have agreed to match the original $10,000. So of the roughly $180,000 expense, $20,000 would be contributed from private parties or organizations, and the city would basically bear the remaining cost of $160,000.
Any questions?
No question, just please go ahead.
Did you want us to vote on that?
I don't think it's appropriate to vote on something like this. We have had a couple of discussions, but I think what the city manager is looking for is some formal agreement.
I just didn't wanna make an assumption. There seemed to be general support, but it is a fairly significant sum of money, so I just wanted to make sure there was no ambiguity or that I clearly understood your direction.
Yes, I think everyone is interested in having the elevator installed.
From a process standpoint, what would happen is I'll execute the change order with TRG. And obviously, once I do that, they're really unconcerned in terms of what the city needs to do. As I mentioned, there'd probably be very minimal expense for the current fiscal year, but as we go through the reconciliation process for the FY '07 budget, you will see this expense essentially kind of added to the column, and it would impact the community center fund expenditures is where it would hit.
Given the size of the expense, do we need to do something formal to? Because I know for other kinds of expenses, if it's over a certain amount, we have to do like a formal change to the budget. Would this require a formal change to the budget?
Yes. I don't know that it would necessarily impact, Mayor, the FY '06 budget. Once I get a better sense from TRG when they would actually be incurring any bonding or architectural cost, that may change my opinion. But if it's such a minimal amount of money, we may be able to absorb it within the existing community center fund budget for '06, but it would clearly need to be incorporated into the FY '07 budget.
Yeah, because I don't recall seeing it in the FY '07.
No, it would, no.
It would be a budget amendment, you're saying?
Well, since you have not adopted the FY '07 budget, there'd be no amendment that would be required. As we go through the reconciliation process, we would need to adjust the community center fund expenditures. And that's basically how we would handle it internally from a process standpoint.
Could you just clarify whether the, just so I have it clear in my own head, that if it affects the '07 community center fund, how does that affect the, any transfers from the general fund and therefore the bottom-line reconciliation that we'll be going through?
It's a good question, Councilmember Williams. What, as you know, and if you recall from the FY '06 budget, and obviously we'll be talking about that later this week, in all likelihood, we will need to have a budget amendment for the FY '06 community center fund budget. There's still a lot of outstanding issues, unfortunately, regarding proposed change orders. But my guess is that we will need to make a transfer from the general fund to the community center fund even for this year, which has nothing really to do with the elevator.
Which will therefore affect the carryover for the '07.
Correct. And I think in terms of the projected fund balance as of June 30th of '07, what you would see if this item is added to the '07 budget is barring any corresponding cuts, if you will, or reductions, you would see the ending fund balance go down marginally as of June 30th of '07.
But it would or would not necessarily affect the reconciliation to the '07 general fund and therefore the tax rate?
It should not affect the tax rate. What you would be doing is actually taking the monies from the fund balance, so it would not necessarily require any change in the tax rate. It would just be a transfer from the general fund to the community center fund, coming from the general fund reserve.
Okay.
But it has no impact. I don't, I think you have a good fund balance, as I mentioned, as we had talked about, I guess several weeks ago. There has been some fund balance monies that have built up over the years for a variety of reasons. In my opinion, a one-time capital expense like this is a perfectly appropriate use of those monies.
And therefore, there will be other transfers as other monies become available for the community center that will cover this?
I'm not sure.
Depending on how we, there's other money coming in from other sources.
That's correct.
Therefore, those transfers would counterbalance this expenditure? Or it's just a wash in the general fund?
It's really more a wash in the general fund. The other monies that have been secured by the city for the community center project have generally focused on the gymnasium.
Okay.
I know at least specifically the verbal pledge, at least from Washington Adventist Hospital, is very restricted. I think certainly the state bond bill monies have some flexibility in terms of the way the city described the project. However, it was primarily pictured as a contribution for the gymnasium, not for something else.
Right.
So I'm not sure that's legally binding.
And my assumption is that because this is an important item for the accessibility of the community center, that that's why it's your recommendation, and because it's a one-time expense, that that's why it come out of fund balance?
Yes, I think that's accurate. I mean, I think using fund balance, particularly if it's for a one-time expense, is perfectly appropriate because it doesn't have a significant impact or an ongoing impact in later years. As the council is aware, one of our residents, Joan Salmon, who specializes in ADA accessibility issues, had actually discussed this matter with the staff some time ago. I think it was his very strong recommendation to be as accessible as we can to the community and to anyone visiting the facility, that the other elevator would be helpful. And certainly those of us who work here day in and day out have certainly seen firsthand some of the challenges, depending on where people park and the ease in which they can get from one floor to another in this facility.
Thank you. I'm sorry if I didn't follow that, but which reserve or fund is it that we're taking this from?
It would basically be handled, Councilmember Simmons, from an accounting standpoint as a transfer from the general fund to the community center fund. So essentially, it'd be a reduction in the general fund, fund balance, or reserve.
Okay, thank you.
It seems like everyone is comfortable with that, so I'll proceed with executing that change order later this week. As soon as I get a better sense of when that work will actually commence, I'll be sure to update the council.
Okay.
Just kind of in closing, in terms of TRG's work, as I had mentioned last week, there were a few minor items that came up as they were trying to, starting to come into the few, last few weeks of the project. At this point, they are expecting substantial completion on May 26th. That's the date they're shooting for. There is one issue which has to do with the fire marshal, primarily dealing with some locking systems in the police department. Obviously, this is not the area in which TRG itself is working. The fire marshal was out here for another reason, and we'll be working through some of those issues. How, if at all, it would impact that May 26 date is somewhat uncertain, since that work is not really covered by TRG's permit. But certainly, as we continue to discuss those issues with the fire marshal, I'll let the council know. But at this point, I see no reason that TRG should not be done by the end of the month.
Terry?
On another note, not the community center, and I didn't know if you had any other updates that you were giving us, but I wanted to check, did I read something about, in an email, that there was some water damage at the library?
Yes, it's unrelated to any construction. This happened when I was out of town, but in reading through the emails, it appears that what happened is that there is a storm inlet in the rear parking lot fairly close to the back door of the library. Obviously, given the number of trees on this site, it became clogged, and it appears that basically that storm inlet merely became clogged and water started backing up in some heavy rains that apparently occurred over the weekend. The Public Works Department is aware of it. The city engineer is going to see if there's some sort of screen or something that can be put on that inlet to hopefully keep debris from clogging it. In the interim, the Public Works Director has directed her staff to basically make this a high priority in terms of checking it on a regular basis and making sure it does not become clogged to the extent we can control that.
Thank you. I know we've put a lot of money in the roof and in the store, the wall and everything else.
Yeah.
It's disconcerting to see water still coming in.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's coming in from a different location this time, but still disconcerting nonetheless. That concludes my report, unless there's any other questions.
There was a request that at some point I thought you were gonna bring before the council for the use of this building for candidate debates.
Yes, thank you very much. I let it slip my mind. I did receive a request from a Tacoma Park resident, I'm sorry, I can't recall her name off the top of my head, to-
Karen Sapansky.
Yeah, basically to whether the city would allow this auditorium to be used to host some candidate forums. I believe she's affiliated with the Democratic Party. It would not necessarily be geared towards any particular candidate, but they wanted to sponsor debates at a minimum for the District 20 race, possibly the county council race, but that seemed a little less defined at this point. This is really not one of the items that is specifically addressed when we've talked about the community center use and rental policy. I think obviously they were hoping to use it for free. In my opinion, obviously, as long as all the candidates who are running for any particular office are equally invited, in some ways, this would provide an easy opportunity for people in the community to come hear the candidates and their views and to make an informed decision as voters. So unless the council has any objection, you know, I would like to go ahead and honor that request, but that's certainly up to the council.
I feel it's an ideal use of the community center.
I was just gonna say, we've used this room for that purpose in the past, both for city elections and for state and other local elections, county elections. And I think it's a very appropriate use. I would also recommend that we provide it at no charge, since I think this is a voter education purpose. And if we were to define voter education type events as being one of the things that we would like to encourage, to the extent that we would provide appropriate space, if available, at no charge, I would recommend that we do that. And obviously, voter education would include not something that had just one candidate's participation, but all the candidates for a particular race participating, or all the candidates from a particular part of the race, or whatever that entity wanted to do. But I would define this clearly as voter education, and I think we ought to encourage it to the extent that we provide the room for free. Terry?
I agree wholeheartedly with you, Mayor Porter. And I'm also interested in hearing other people's opinions about providing for fee the facility for use by a single candidate for meet-and-greet functions and things like that. It seems appropriate also, since, you know, space is always an issue with holding events.
Yeah. That's obviously a policy decision for the council. I believe there is a provision in the city code currently that prohibits the use of a public building or a city facility for what is deemed to be a political purpose. That's obviously something that we can put on a future work session agenda for the council to discuss, but if my recollection is correct, that would probably be currently prohibited, since it would be giving or favoring one particular candidate.
I think that might be something that we would have to talk about if we wanted to move forward on that, because I remember that section, yes. But I think the debate would certainly not come under that.
If there's no objection, then I will get back in touch with the individual who contacted me. There was not a specific date that was mentioned. I think they were just interested in finding out if this room would be available, and then they would proceed with setting a date and inviting candidates.
Bruce has another question.
Unrelated to what we were just talking about. Update on the soil borings and the RFP.
I think Suzanne Ludlow and I have been, are continuing to talk about the RFP and basically hope to have that drafted within the next few weeks. On the soil borings, I know Vanita George has contacted ECS. The gentleman who was our original point of contact apparently is either left the company or been moved on to another project. We have a new contact, and she's awaiting some information. She was at training all day today, but I'll have her contact them again tomorrow and just let them know that the council is quite anxious to get that work underway.
Right, and I just wanna make sure that everybody realizes that we need to have the RFP process move forward, because I think the point that we're gonna get to is wanting to be able to have a, be ready to, if necessary, go forward in the state bond pool in January of '07. And we would need to have gone through whatever process we need before them, and that will need the information from the RFP.
One of the, we'll be distributing at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, the agenda packets for Thursday night's budget work sessions. One of the items included in that agenda packet, which I would particularly encourage you to read, has to do with the community center fund. As I've mentioned, there are certain requirements tied to the various funding sources for the gym project or anything associated with that. And I would encourage you to read that. Basically, for many of the funding sources, before we would expend any funds, if we're planning to seek reimbursement under, for instance, the state bond bill program or program open space, you need to get the approval of the Board of Public Works. They will not be taking up any applications, obviously, until after the start of fiscal year '07. So that's one of the things that I'd like to talk to the council about Thursday night relative to the community center fund budget, is what source of funds do you wish to use for the feasibility study? Because that has certain consequences in terms of the approval process and what we may be able to be reimbursed for and what we may not be able to be reimbursed for. So that's really gonna be what the community center fund discussion has to focus on Thursday evening. So it's a very valid question, Councilmember Williams.
Any other questions? Okay, all right. We are now moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is an interview. We have an interview with Alexandra Baranovo.
Hi, I'm Baranovo.
I apologize.
That's okay.
You can either stand at the podium or sit at the table, whatever you're most comfortable.
I'll sit if that's okay.
That's fine, that would be great. Why don't you sit in front of one of the microphones?
Oh, sure.
So we, since this is being broadcast, we have to, we have to use the microphone so people can hear you.
Okay.
And everything you say will be on the web in perpetuity.
Okay.
Yes, that's really, it makes me nervous, right? We've got the information that you sent, we've got your letter, and we've got your resume. And I just wanted to ask you about your interest in the facade advisory board and why you're interested in participating in the facade advisory board.
Sure. I'm a recent relocation to the Tacoma Park area, and I've always tried to be civically involved in the community in which I live. As you see on my resume, I was an elected commissioner in my last town of residence, and I saw that the vacancy had opened up here on your facade advisory board, and it just seemed like an ideal fit. I have a background in historic preservation, I'm working towards my master's degree, and I'm an attorney. And right now, I'm working as a legal fellow at the National Trust in the law department. So it just seemed like a nice way to combine civic interests with some skills that I hopefully can bring to the organization.
Well, I have to say, in looking both at your letter and your resume, I was very impressed with how many of the kinds of things we look for you do have. So I think you're correct, that you do have a lot of the skills that we would be looking for on the facade advisory board. So I very much appreciate your volunteering.
Sure, it's my pleasure. I've gone to a couple of meetings, and I found them very illuminating. It's been great.
Are there other questions from the council? I think everyone else found your resume and your background equally impressive, so there don't seem to be any questions.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks for having me in, and have a great evening.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, we are moving to the first of our work session items, which is a discussion of resolution of intent to join the National Flood Insurance Program. And I wanna say, in the blue sheet that explained this, it actually is the most cogent explanation I've seen so far of the situation we face vis-à-vis floodplains and flood insurance in the city. And so I have to say that perhaps people who don't understand how we could not have known that the city building was built in a floodplain ought to read this, because it explains in gory detail, I mean, how these kinds of things can exist. And it does sound like the whole situation is much more up in the air and unorganized than I even suspected, having gone through that process.
Well, thank you for reading it. The first time I read the lawyer's brief on this, my eyes crossed, and I had to wait till the next day to do it again before I delved into this, because it is very complex. And there's a number of different elements. I'd like to go through them, because some people get very upset when they find out that there's something related to flooding, related to their property, or that they might not be covered by insurance that they thought they had, that kind of thing. So I'd like to take a little bit of time and talk about that. You'll also be having an item coming before you related to the runoff issues such as- You'll also be having an item coming before you related to um, the runoff issues such as occurred with Columbia Union College, and that's, you'll find is, is somewhat tied into this. But today we're just talking about the National Flood Insurance Program. The National Flood Insurance Program is a federal program that enables property owners in participating communities to purchase insurance as a protection against flood loss. And um, for years it's been interpreted that Tacoma Park has been covered by this program because of the oversight of Montgomery County and the fact that Montgomery County issues building permits in Tacoma Park and has floodplain management regulations that are even more stringent than the federal standards. However, and I, I think it's probably related to Hurricane Katrina and some of the other experiences, FEMA and the Maryland Department of the Environment decided that they wanted to strengthen the, make more clear which areas, which communities are participating within this National Flood Insurance Program. And they came to Montgomery County, had a meeting with various municipal representatives, um, and told them that they must provide a resolution of intent to enter the National Flood Insurance Program, provide community floodplain management regulations, or prove that Montgomery County covers those for us, and then formally apply to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. And as I said, we've long considered we've been in it through Montgomery County, and that's been the interpretation through the state for many years. We have to apply to this program, submit our application to FEMA, and be approved by FEMA's lengthy process by September. So there is some urgency about passing this resolution. Um, the, um, if we do not pass the resolution by Sept-, I mean, if we do not get accepted by September, and it's determined that we're not part of the National Flood Insurance Program, then Tacoma Park property owners could not purchase flood insurance through the program, federal grants or loans would not be available for areas within flood hazard areas, and federal disaster assistance would not be provided to repair insurable buildings within identified flood hazard areas. So I think it's a good idea we go ahead and do this process. It doesn't cost a lot, and it's, it's not an onerous application process. However, I wanted to talk about the fact that there are two different kinds of floodplains or flood hazard areas in Tacoma Park. There are the kind that are shown on the FEMA maps, and um, these, this area is just along Sligo Creek, and it's right along the creek bed itself. I believe that only um, the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission is affected by the floodplain that is shown on the FEMA maps for Tacoma Park. Recently, um, about a year ago, a quick update of the FEMA maps for this, from Montgomery County took place. And we were sent, all the municipalities were sent maps to check the spelling of street names and that kind of thing. They took those, the current maps, and they applied it to a topographic map, and they adjusted the lines of the floodplains that were shown on the old FEMA maps to go consistent with the contours of the topography. That is what they're declaring the updated FEMA map from Montgomery County. They did not look at any of the, rest of the areas of Tacoma Park, only those areas that were already on the map. So only around Sligo Creek. And in fact, I think that no, no contour change was made for Tacoma Park. Those are the areas that are called special flood hazard areas for FEMA. However, Montgomery County has floodplain management regulations that are to more stringent standards. And when Montgomery County surveyed the county to map those areas, to save money reportedly, they did not include areas within municipalities. And therefore municipalities across Montgomery County were not surveyed for flood hazard areas per Montgomery County regulations. The, um, this has been, basically people believe that if they're not shown on the FEMA map, then they're safe from flooding. And that's not the case. It's not the case in Montgomery County, where we're painfully aware of, when you apply for major building permit for large-scale construction, uh, you trigger the Montgomery County floodplain standards, and you can do the studies, and suddenly you find out you're in a floodplain area. And I wanted to be clear that floodplains don't just come from, up from creeks, like many people think, but they also come down hills in stormwater. And the issue for this building was the water that would come down on both sides of Philadelphia and down Maple, congregate at this intersection, and flow down Maple Avenue towards Sligo Creek, for the standards of Montgomery County. Those standards are likely to be accepted in the future by FEMA as stand, as their standards, and will eventually be put on the FEMA maps for Montgomery County. At this point, though, it's many years out. They've just said, they've just updated the maps. They're not going to go back and do those for many, many years. In the meantime, people who wish to protect their properties may apply for National Flood Insurance Program fund, insurance, and as long as they're not in an area that is on the FEMA map, they can get the low-cost rate for that flood insurance, even if they are on an area that's like right next door to this property, that is in a Montgomery County floodplain. And so it is, it is a way to have a lower-cost flood insurance. If you keep your payments up with that, you can be grandfathered in at that lower rate, even once the FEMA maps are updated to show the Montgomery County standards of floodplains. It's very convoluted. Um, I'm happy to talk with any resident who is concerned about those kinds of things. Um, I think it's, I just want to be very clear that most of Tacoma Park is not on the map of floodplains, and yet there are many areas likely that are floodplains per Montgomery County standards in Tacoma Park. And at some point, people in those areas could be affected. Until the survey is done, we won't know where those areas are. They only get triggered for major development. Anyway, I just wanted to go through that. It's, it's something that people ask me questions about. At this point, we would simply be fulfilling FEMA's desire to make sure that they're clear that Tacoma Park is participating in the National Flood Insurance Program.
I, I had one question, which sort of came out of the experience that we had. You, you have a sentence here which I've underlined and put asterisks next to. Um, it says, "Since most of Tacoma Park is unmapped for flood hazard determination purposes, this means that if development occurs, the burden is on the developer," which in the case of the Community Center was us, "to determine if a flood hazard exists-"
That's right.
"-as part of the Montgomery County permit application process."
That's right.
Um, that means that for areas where there has not been any recent development, which is most of the city, there's no way of knowing whether you are in a floodplain or not-
Yes.
"-until such time as FEMA gets around to updating their maps, which could be years and years into the future."
Right.
Is that correct?
That's right. It, it was going to be done within the next five years, and now it's probably, my guess is it's 20 years away. If you think, though, about the topography of Tacoma Park with all of the hills, and with the criteria of running down hills, most of the property is developed with houses and yards and whatever, you have a lot of runoff, it's probably easy to trigger the Montgomery County regulations.
And, and so, can I just do one follow-up? And so what we do know, as a result of the city, when we went for our permit, we were in that same situation where the county forced us to go through a water flow analysis, whatever, and it turned out we were in a floodplain. But as a result of knowing that, it's, we also figured that it was highly likely that the people who are located at the bottom of Philadelphia on either side of Maple and at the bottom of the hill on Maple probably are also in the floodplain. And so what you said then becomes particularly important for them. If they want to buy flood insurance now, they, they can buy it on, in non-floodplain prices, and then at some point, if they're still around, when FEMA gets around to updating the map, they can keep their low-cost flood insurance even after it's declared floodplain.
That's true, and we haven't, we, at the time when we learned this information, we shared that with the affected property owners.
Yeah, but, but I did, I remember that, and I remember there are a number of people who came to that meeting at the church, but I don't think it covered all of those neighbors, and so, just in case somebody doesn't realize that, or maybe somebody, a property's turned over and the new owners don't realize that.
Right.
It's important.
The only thing I was going to say is, I, I thought it was silly what we wound up doing what we did because of the floodplain. And I mean, this, this city has been through numerous major hurricanes, and I've never even ever seen boats out on the street. And I just think this is, this concern over floodplains is that extreme. I mean, there may be places that are technically in a floodplain, but we've seen amazingly heavy rains, and we don't, we're not going underwater.
I, I can't debate that at this point, but, but Montgomery County has, has regulations. They're relatively accepted regulations. Um, and they do get triggered upon development.
But, but can I just follow up with that? There are a lot of people in New England who would have said the same thing until this week. And there are floods in New England where they've, within, within historical memory, they've never had floods before.
But the rivers are overflowing. We don't have any rivers here. We don't have any water here of any substance.
Well, no, but it comes downhill from streets and roofs and stuff. And with climate change, one of the things that is going to happen is some areas are going to get more rain. Who knows if we're going to be one of them or not, but I wouldn't bet on things being the same as they've always been.
Bruce? And I would say that there have been areas that are in the city that have had boats, uh, and that's Pinecrest. They, I've seen, I've seen pictures. They, they had boats to get around in Pinecrest, not all that many years ago. That has always been one of their main concerns in that.
I'd love to see the picture, but I thought we fixed that in Montgomery County.
We, 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 we hope we have fixed it. It appears to have been fixed, but they, they did have boats. And some of the people there still have them on trailers in their yards, ready. And based on what you've just gone through, uh, my assumption is that because of what we had to do at this building for kind of hundred-year remediation, um, I'm assuming that uh, somebody thought about whether it was in the city's interest to buy flood insurance for this building at the cheap rate and decided that wasn't a good idea. Did anybody have that discussion?
Um, I, I don't know the answer to that. I, there has been discussion, but I don't remember the outcome of that.
We should, we should check on that.
I will, I will certainly check on that.
Because it, it seems, if, if we're not going to do it, we ought to, it ought to at least be a, an affirmative decision-
A conscious decision.
"-to not do it.
Yes.
And on the one hand, it's a, it's a, it's an advantage to get it at the cheap rate when you know you're in a floodplain, and on the other hand, from the larger policy point of view, from the federal level, it's kind of crazy to give everybody cheap flood insurance, knowing that you may have big payouts at the end, witness what happened with Katrina.
Teri?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Um, having lived uh, for several years in a floodplain in Houston, Texas, and experiencing several uh, floods, I can tell you the great value of, of the FEMA's flood, flood insurance. And although I don't often see boats on the streets in Tacoma Park, in fact, never, uh, I've certainly heard enough stories of people who wish they had boats in their basements in Tacoma Park because of the floods that they've received. This thing with the county, though, it, you know, makes me wonder why, uh, what is it about Tacoma Park residents that don't make them uh, receive equal services from the county? Uh, and why we didn't uh, get our uh, areas mapped with the, the flood mapping, floodplain mapping? And in fact, it, it raises the question in my mind again, and I know this has been addressed by the council in past years, of, of why did Tacoma Park have to pay for that mapping here, uh, at the Community Center uh, as part of that project, if it was a service that was provided by the county in the past for residents outside of municipality?
Well, as I mentioned, um, it, it, this was some, many years ago, the surveying of Montgomery County, and there was a decision made not to include any of the municipalities. So many, so all the different municipalities around Montgomery County are going through this same process right now, trying to make sure that they're signed up with the National Flood Insurance Program. And for many of them that have very small staffs, it is a hardship. Um, and, and they've been-
I would suggest that, I know we'll be talking about the TASD committee recommendations later, and part of that is rebates, but I would suggest that maybe we want to work with the other municipalities to see again why the county isn't footing the bill for-
Well, I think that's a good thing to look at.
-the mapping here and the-
I do want to mention that um, one of the things that add a little bit of confusion to this particular resolution is that we're also trying to clarify legally the responsibilities of Montgomery County versus Tacoma Park on the issue of illicit discharges, which is all related to the same segment of Chapter 19 of the Montgomery County Code. And so coming to you sometime soon, after the various attorneys have quit looking at it, will be a clarification that shows that Montgomery County is responsible for those. And in fact, that Montgomery County is responsible for all of the provisions of Chapter 19, with the exception of stormwater management, which we have affirmatively taken on. That confusion over what does Chapter 19 apply to was um, added to confusion at the state level about how to go through this process. Uh, we're just trying to make it very clean, all the way around that this is, that we're affirmatively joining this and that Montgomery County is responsible.
Okay. Um, I'm assuming that the, the council is um, in agreement with putting this on a future agenda to, for the council to deal with legislatively. Okay, and as you mentioned, the next item on the agenda is the discussion of the follow-up on the TASD report. And I um, want to make clear, I, we've got 45 minutes on the agenda to talk about this, and there's several recommendations to talk about. And I just wanted to make clear that this isn't the time that we're going to go into detail about whether we should um, go forward with any of these or not. I mean, well, this isn't the time to say, okay, what are we going to do? What I'd like to do is a couple of things um, this evening. Um, one is to sort of go through the, the way we left it the last time. The TASD committee gave us a report. The council talked briefly about the report and sent a number of the recommendations to the staff for their investigation and recommendations. And this is the staff coming back to us with the results of their investigation and their recommendations to us. Um, at this point, I think we should go through, ask any questions we have, make sure that we understand um, the information that we're getting in the staff's recommendations. And then the council should decide this evening to pursue or not to pursue each of the recommendations or groups of recommendations. If we decide we want to pursue something up, then I'll go ahead and set aside a discussion of, of that item, and we can deal with it in more depth. We won't have time this evening of 45 minutes to go into depth in all of the items. But I did want to make sure that the staff's, the information the staff had got on the record, got discussed, any questions answered, um, before we get all the way through the budget, because it might have an influence on how people relate to various things in the budget. Um, but if we do want to talk about something in more detail, um, I will go ahead and schedule another whole work session on those particular issues. If they are major issues in terms of the way the city operates, we probably would want to have a more extended process where we talked about it, made sure that we understood what the implications were, and then had a public hearing or some other method of putting it in front of the public, and then before we took any action on it. So, um, I, I wanted to make that clear. I also wanted to make it clear to the public that the council is not intending to go ahead and make major changes to city services this evening, that this is another step in um, the process of looking at those recommendations, looking at what the, what information the staff has turned up and what the staff's recommendations are based on those, that, that information. So, um-
I was just going to suggest it might be helpful if Suzie could give us, not just for this discussion, but for our budget discussion, if you could give us an update of the county council's discussion today of the police rebate?
That's fine.
Sure.
Um, I was at the county council this morning, and it was the county council budget work session on tax duplication. That's one of the items, and with the police rebate, the county council supported the executive's recommendation, um, which were the figures that had been put into the budget. In that discussion, and in Marilyn Prazer, who's head of the MFP Committee's presentation of the item, she reiterated that the amount that was identified for the police rebate in the county executive's budget was higher than the amount, if the formula would have been followed carefully, by about $150,000. Having, and that, um, because of the need for budget decisions at the city level and some stability, that she did not want to hurt us at this point by taking that money out of um, the, um, the amount for this current FY07 budget year. But that if it were determined that that was indeed, should have been a reduction according to the formula, and there's dispute about that, um, that over time- about that, that over time, there may be a discussion to pay it back. She did talk about the need for future discussions and negotiations on municipal tax duplication, and her interest in participating in those discussions. This is the same that she mentioned before when it was, when this item was before the MFP committee, and I really do appreciate that she kept putting that forward, she put it forward again today, and she was looking forward to a new county executive with whom these discussions could take place. Then Tom Perez also spoke, indicating that many people had spoken to him about the matter, were very interested in it, and that he also would like to see these discussions go forward. So it was a good morning for that, and I was pleased to see that there was an acknowledgement of the interest of the community about the subject. I can go through kind of a summary of these items, if you'd like, to get started, or do you want to just jump in?
I think if you can do a summary very quickly, I think you should also start by letting people who might be watching this on the cable channel or by, through the internet, if you could let them know where the document would be if they wanted to look it up.
Right. The, both the TASD report, which is, this is a report on, and the staff's recommendations and analysis of the report are on the website, which is Tacoma, TacomaParkMD.gov, and so please feel free to go on that. They can either look at the city council discussion this evening and click on this as a related agenda item, or they can look on the webpage under casting.
Would they be able to find the updated, your updated staff report?
I believe so.
Okay.
We passed that along this afternoon, so it should, it should be on there very shortly, if it's not already. Basically, I went through each of the different recommendations of the Residents Committee on Tax and Service Duplication Issues, TASD, and reported on the status of work on those items and a staff recommendation if appropriate. Kind of breaks down into three different categories. One is recommendations that the city council has indicated in many ways that you support, but require council advocacy, your activities. And the largest and most important one of those is influencing a future county executive and the other municipalities to proceed with negotiations, a look at tax duplication once the new county executive takes office. It is something that we don't, there's, people can say no. You know, we do need to encourage these people to commit to that renegotiation after the county executive takes office. That kind of advocacy needs to come from you and from the community, because it's a political advocacy, city staff aren't really able to do that. The, right now, there's four county executive candidates, as far as I know, I put down three, but there's four that I have heard of: Robin Ficker, Chuck Floyd, Ike Leggett, and Steve Silverman. If you know of others, please keep me informed, but these all should be approached and should be asked to commit to being familiar with these issues and to commit to negotiations on tax duplication once taking office. And that those, that those negotiations take place soon after the county executive takes office, and not sometime later. One of the key recommendations of the TASD committee, which is an important component of a future negotiation, is that the tax duplication payments include payment for administration, facilities, and other aspects of overhead costs. That was one of the most significant differences in what the TASD committee found in the amounts that the county pays us for what, instead of what they shouldn't be paying us. Also, it would be very helpful to have a commitment that tax duplication payments are not restricted to the amount the county spends on services that are paid from property taxes. That is how the state law is written when it comes to tax duplication, but there's no reason that the county has to adhere to that. They can come up with another agreement with us. And because the, the way that the county has more flexibility in terms of taxes that it imposes, and it gets a larger percentage of income tax, it makes the burden on the municipalities even more unfair. I also recommend that negotiations include discussions of ways to compensate the city for some of these constraints that we have on revenue generation. For example, the arbitrariness of the 17% income tax cap, the passback cap. We could work out a different kind of arrangement with the county that recognizes that that 17% cap is not particularly useful for us and is harmful for us. Other kinds of taxes, like real property transfer taxes and recrodation taxes, that there may be some way to compensate for that. And also, as recommended in the TASD report, that there be some compensation for services provided to county institutions, such as Montgomery College and public schools within the city. And so I think that, at least staff's recommendation, is that if there's some commitment to those kinds of discussions, that we could go a long ways toward meeting the goals of having a fair and equitable tax rebate. Another aspect of things that you can do as the county, as the city council, is to initiate the discussions of regional revenue sharing with county and state officials, as well as COG. And so as you're having your discussions in COG meetings with state agencies and different committees that you sit on, you can encourage revenue sharing as something to be studied by their various staff, and that there may be some helpful ways to better, better spread the wealth around in those areas that require greater need to see that, to see those funds. So those are the two big things that, that I think the city council and other elected officials and community members can, can sink your teeth in, is an election season, this is the time to do it, and it's not something that staff can easily do, or in many cases is allowed. One of the, another of the categories are recommendations that the council supports and that you have directed staff to pursue, and one of them always comes up, you know, renegotiate the police rebate. At this point, we're not able to renegotiate the police rebate. We've, it's clear that, that won't happen with the current county executive, that we have to wait for the incoming county executive. So we are prepared to have that discussion when we're able to get to the table. One of the things that we can do is prepare to renegotiate the park maintenance rebate. This is an area that has particularly inconclusive backing. There's no detail at all about where they came up with the number to rebate for police, for park maintenance. And what we have planned to do as staff is have an MML graduate intern with us this summer, and one of her assignments will be to do some really good research on park maintenance costs, consult with other municipalities and with the park staff, so that when we go into those negotiations, we've got good numbers to work with and we can just move quickly. The next item, there's a recommendation in the TASD report is to negotiate some kind of a payment for recreation services. Obviously, that ends up being part of this negotiation with the new county executive staff. However, one element does have to do with elderly services, and there is a provision under the current agreement to get a tax duplication payment for services to the elderly. What we need to do as staff is document the services that we're providing and submit that to the county executive staff. Once we show, if we meet the criteria for that payment, we would be able to receive payments under that category without negotiations with the other municipalities, but the first year that we would receive that would be FY09, because of the two-year delay process of tax duplication payments. We can lobby as staff. We can advocate for reform of the 17% income tax cap. We can advocate for the authority to have other kinds of taxes or to arrange revenue sharing agreements. We've lobbied heavily, it was a busy year this past year, and we'll be lobbying again at the state level. This is an area where I don't think there's been much success, but your assistance or any hints about how to lobby for that would be appreciated. Another recommendation of the TASD committee that's a staff-oriented discussion has to do with assessing city services to determine correct levels of service charges, fees, fines, and that kind of thing. We've been doing that as part of our budget process, and similarly, we monitor intergovernmental grants to make sure that we're fairly compensated, we're not ignored. The final category, and this is the one where upcoming discussions will be important, are those recommendations that require further research or they require kind of a discussion with the community about the next steps. I'm just going to jump to the staff's recommendations, but you'll have a lot more discussion about these. The staff's recommendations on the police services item is not to move to a shared patrol form of policing, the kind that Rockville and Gaithersburg have, and our reasons are in the report, I'm answering any questions that you have. Also, we are also recommending continuing to provide police dispatch services for the next two years, including providing 24-hour police staffing open to the public, and continue to receive calls on the 301-270-1100 number. As we go for the next couple of years, we can collect data on the new communications equipment that can allow us to have the discussion with the county if, to determine if switching dispatch makes sense. And if we do that, it would be for management purposes, not for financial savings purposes. We can partner with Montgomery County Police, Montgomery County Police Department to gain benefits of some of their specialized units. One of the things that Montgomery County Police Department has, is a large police department, are some specialized units that have some merit. We have, they have the traffic fatality reconstruction team, they have homicide, major sex offenses, commercial robberies, child abuse, major drug offenses, vice, and intelligence units. And there may be times, it may be seen as to the good of the community to partner on some of those with Montgomery County and to use those services. So we recommend looking into that. On other subjects, we recommend not pursuing contract, trying to ask to contract road maintenance to the county, not require, not pursuing withdrawing from paying the county recreation tax, and not pursuing a change to services provided to the library, provided by the library this year. So those are, that's the summary of what we'll find in this report. The information on how staff got to those is in the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Before we get to questions, let me just add to that. I don't think this is the appropriate forum to talk sort of political strategy issues, but one of the county council, one of the county executive candidates has pledged to, to do a renegotiation shortly after he's elected. In terms of the terms of it, he didn't know enough to be specific, but we have, he recommended a person for us to follow up with, and, and we will do that. One of the other county council candidate, county executive candidates has indicated to me that he's interested, but haven't had a detailed discussion with him. I can also say that in, in my position as the chair of MML's Municipal Revenue Subcommittee of their, of their Strategy Committee, we did talk about a number of the other things that are listed under, under, under other revenue issues, and in fact, and I apologize, I was going to send it around this afternoon and just didn't get to it, the recommendations from that Subcommittee did include recommendations that MML support other forms of revenue generation. This is, the committee made recommendations, MML sort of adopted a couple of them immediately. One was that this entity be formed, and the other was that this entity begin to discuss some of these issues. They didn't adopt the specific issues yet, but I think that that's coming down the road. But many of these issues that fall into the, under the other revenue, additional revenue opportunities, were discussed in that Subcommittee. A number of them, the other municipal officials who served on the Subcommittee were interested in. There were some places where they were interested, but just, they weren't convinced that we could make any headway on it. But I think that the, the fact that they ended up in the Subcommittee's recommendations and were sent out to the, to the Board of Directors of MML and from there to the membership is something that is sort of getting those issues before the other municipalities, and I think that's the beginning of what we need to do in order to get their support for making changes in state law. I think as we, as we've talked about with other issues, there is a, a sense in the state that things that are done from municipalities take away from the benefits of counties, and it's always been sort of an uphill battle for MML. But what you really need to do in order to affect something in that atmosphere is to get a large number of municipalities firmly behind that position, and then it can be done. That happened with annexation issues in, before the legislature this year, where Mako had a very strong position, which was countered by a number of municipalities, and ended up with something that was a much more reasonable provision being considered by the legislature. So I think we have actually begun on a number of those sort of political things that need to be done, but a lot of it is going to need to be done between now and the primary.
I guess I'm kind of disappointed that we're not further, I mean, this report could have been the summary of the TASD report, there's nothing in here that we didn't already know in terms of what needed to be changed at the state level, what needed to be renegotiated at the county level, that all municipalities don't share our concerns about all the same issues. I mean, this is, this is not news. I'm skeptical of, of counting on getting things done during the primary process, because no one is going to sit down and do an analysis and say, this is going to be the formula for what's going to come out of this after the primary process. So I don't believe we will get anything other than, you know, commitments to sit down and talk. But this, this council and MML have had commitments to sit down and talk with the current county executive. On a number of occasions, we negotiated the meet and confer, which is, still amounts to nothing more than meet and be told what we're going to get and don't ask any questions. And this, this is the reality, and I don't, I don't see, I don't see this changing anything. I, I would still like to examine, I think where I was last week. I, I don't think that we need to wait for all the municipalities in Montgomery County to agree that a formula should be changed or how we should change it. I think we ought to pick a large department where there's a lot of money involved, do an analysis, take you back on the TASD analysis of what we get and what we don't get, and present it to the county, and proceed with the idea that they can perform the same services for us that they perform for other municipalities, if they think they can do it for the money they're giving us. And to me, the, the thing that's going to drive the county is that they're confronted with a situation that's more expensive to do it themselves than to have the city doing it. Right now, it seems like it's cheaper for the county to have the city do it, given what they give us to do some very expensive jobs. And I guess I would like to see us take the approach of analyzing something big, seeing it gets to our advantage to have the discussion with the county about whether we're going to do it or they're going to do it, and see if we can make the point that you really can't do it for what you say you're going to do it for, so let's negotiate about a rebate, and not wait for all the other municipalities to line up behind it. Because frankly, I mean, we'll be having this discussion a year from now. I mean, all the other municipalities are going to have to decide this is where they want to be, they're going to have to decide these are the issues they want to fight, they're going to have to weigh the same things that we weighed. I mean, all the years we were building the community center was, let's not raise these issues because it'll jeopardize community center funding. Well, I can go around the county, and you know, Gaithersburg's going to say, I don't want to raise an issue that's going to jeopardize X, and Rockville's got reasons not to raise issues because it's going to jeopardize Y. I think we need to, to be a little bit more aggressive on our part in terms of laying out to the county what the reality is for us and what the reality is for them.
Well, I-
My colleagues feel, but that's our field.
Well, I was going to say, you must not have been aware of the fact that MML did do a task force last year.
Yes, I was, I saw, I saw the presentation on it.
Okay.
I don't see any movement on it. We do task force and studies and then-
I was going to say, there, there was a lot of municipalities who were interested in that. I think the understanding was that with a year left on the county executive's tenure, that that wasn't the time to move forward with it. I am convinced that there are at least some of the people that I've spoken to on that task force who are interested in moving forward with it when we have a new county executive. And I think that, you know, I do think that talking to people while they're running for election is the right time to talk to them, and I don't think those are necessarily inconsistent strategies. I mean, we can certainly look at turning over services to the county, but I think that we're not going to end up turning over all of anything to the county, and I think we still need to proceed to try and get a more fair rebate for the things- need to proceed to try and get a more fair rebate for the things that we continue to do.
I'm not suggesting that I want the outcome to be that we turn it over. I'm suggesting that we present the county with a clear case about why, if we're gonna do it, we should get more money. And, I mean, I was at that meeting, I remember Bruce being appalled at the realization that we got nothing from capital. I mean, it was just like, the situation was worse than we imagined, rather than better than we imagined.
You mean on the, you mean on the road rebate, yes.
And, you know, the reality is that after, when the election sits in, people who've already been elected, they've got four years, they can do whatever they wanna do for a year. They're not gonna be beholden to like, just a few million dollars for us.
Well, presumably, if they promise to do something, they'll do it.
Promise to look at it, that's all they promise.
Well, that, that's why I think we need to get a more specific promise from people.
I will say, on the, on the road rebate, the information that we have on the figures from the county are very specific, they're very useful. They show exactly how much they spend on the various aspects, and how much they take off because things that aren't covered by property tax and that kind of thing. So it's, it's all on a chart, it's easy to show somebody. It's not something that further research needs to be done on.
Chris?
I don't, I think it was you, Kathy, who said just now that what you're talking about and what Mark is talking about aren't necessarily incompatible. I think we can do both.
Yeah.
I think we need to do both. So I think we just need to decide on our strategy for the campaign season and who we're gonna talk to, and both, both candidates, and talking to the other municipalities at places like Ocean City, and chapter meetings, and wherever else we see people. And we need to start pulling together, you know, our, our best case for the kind of thing that Mark is talking about, and I'm assuming you're talking about various aspects of public works.
It seems like you've got started.
Yes, I think we can do both as well. And I'd like to see, I guess, some dates and action items on paper, rather than just endlessly talk about it. Could we have some tentative dates about when we're going to do X, Y, and Z?
Well, yeah, if, if the council wishes to move forward on this, I think I will go ahead and set up another agenda item to talk about what we might do with that. I think, personally, I think public works is not a good one to move forward with, because so much of it at the county level is, I mean, there's the roads, which is a specific issue, and then there's things like, there's things like trash, which is not even an issue because they do it for fee, and there's things like maintenance of city buildings, which if, if given, we said we're gonna turn over the city buildings to use, they'd say, fine, we'll sell them. I mean, they're not gonna deal with them. So a lot of the things we do under public work is something the county would never do if they-
Right, so we just talked about the things that they wouldn't-
Yeah, so, so I, but I think that we can talk about those things in a separate meeting. I think what I'd like to accomplish this time is, as I said, I don't wanna get into the political strategy too much, and I, I agree with Suzanne. I think that's something that we as individuals are gonna have to work out and deal with candidates on. But I would be happy to set up another meeting to talk in detail about how we would move forward on the, on the other strategy that Mark was talking about. Colleen?
I wanna say that I, I share Mark's sort of outrage about how this whole process works and how unfair it is to us, and just how bald-faced unfair it is to us that, that, you know, you can sit there as a, as an elected representative who supposedly represents all the people in Montgomery County, you know, including Tacoma Park, last time I checked, there's some in Montgomery County, and not provide more equity to this group. On page three, under Police Services Committee Recommendation Number Three, the city should investigate the opportunity of a shared patrol police force. I'm concerned that the staff recommendation right up on this would indicate that it didn't really understand the total concept here. And the reason why I'm concerned is because the comment back here is that none of the municipalities with this form of policing receive any tax duplication for payment of police services, and there is a good chance that we would lose the large tax duplication payment that we currently receive. The, the whole basis of the model would in fact require that you didn't get a tax duplication payment, is because the point of the, of the model, as we discussed it in the TASI committee, was that the county provide all the baseline police services that it currently provides in the rest of the county, and that the city only pay for police services beyond what the county's baseline services are. And one of the comments, I think, that Mayor Porter made was that you'd have to be careful not to fall into a couple of traps. Let me see if I can remember them. And one of them is that if you have some officers that are paid for by the county and some officers that are paid for by the city, but they have the same amount, the same scope of duties, that the county dispatchers will always call the city police first, and that-
That's what Rockville complains about.
Yeah, and that the county becomes a, a backup. And then, and I think that the, the solution to that, and what we talked about in the TASI committee, is that, you know, you have the county provide the baseline services, including all those specialty services that you were, were talking about. I, I understand that currently they say they'll provide 21 officers, but then we don't get a lot of the administrative and overhead costs, and we get all of this, I think, two years, two years behind the times. So any way you do it, well, with anything that we take on, almost anything we take on is a money-losing proposition. But the whole point is that if the county provided the baseline, and then we looked at the difference between what we're spending now, what we're currently getting in tax rebates, and maybe the maximum amount of money that we could ever expect to get in tax rebates, and what's the difference between those figures, and how much more policing could we buy for that? And what are the actual additional things that Tacoma Park residents want to see from our police office? Is it really that we want them to come out to our house every time there's a petty crime for which there's, you know, little evidence, and you sit around and wait for them to come out and take a report? Is that really what we want? Or do we want to put people in additional cars? Do we wanna put people on foot patrols for community-oriented policing? I don't think that this tells me that the staff performed the analysis of what it was the TASI committee was actually talking about there.
I guess, to address that, I think it certainly doesn't go into the fact that, you know, is there a concern about providing the base services by the county, and then we provide the extra services that we feel Tacoma Park residents wish? I do think that having seen what happens in Rockville and the other municipalities that have a shared patrol, but especially in Rockville, I personally don't believe that we would get to a point where we would be sure that the county was providing all the base services and we were just providing the extra services. So that's, that's my personal belief. We certainly can go back and, and expound off on that, but I think that that's the concern, that we're not going to find a way to enforce that, to determine it or enforce it.
Can I clarify what I think that is? From my understanding, this goes to talking with the county, the source, from the office commander, whatever, at one point, is that if they were to cover Tacoma Park, it would simply be added into another beat. So there's no guarantee that there would be a Tacoma Park officer. They would add extra officers, because this would add to the territory of their beat, but it wouldn't be, Tacoma Park then becomes the beat. And so the risk is that, yeah, there are other officers on, but there's no guarantee that there are three officers in Tacoma Park who are county officers, there's no guarantee there are two officers in Tacoma Park who are, who are county officers. And so our officers become defective, the first responders, even though the county's technically covering us.
No, I don't think that that's how you have to set up the, the model.
That's how the county wants to set up the model. That may not be how we could set it up, but they're not gonna give us 21 officers for Tacoma Park.
Okay, well, but the point is, I think we should, we should evaluate what is a model that's functional for us, and, and stop with, this isn't gonna work because of this, and this isn't gonna be, work because of this, and, and seek out a model that, that does work and that, that works for everybody. And I think that there are models out there across the country for this, there are all kinds of models. There are leaseback models. The town that I grew up in has a, a shared police department. Their officers are, Yorbalinda leases officers from the, from the city of La Rea, and they have, they have a shared policing department. And I think that we should go out and investigate those, and see how they want, see how they work, and then come back and, and talk about, talk about those, and be open-minded about, you know, what the possibilities are for this.
I'm, I'm gonna take that as an interest on the part of the council in pursuing this recommendation further, and I think where we, where we should go this evening is we should say, yes, that's something that at least a member of the council, and I would be willing to pursue further. And then we should schedule a particular discussion of that.
Is this the kind of thing we could give to the Public Safety Committee to say, let's look at alternative, like the model you just mentioned, the leaseback model from La Rea? Could, could that committee research some of the alternatives and come in and say, this is how these programs run, this is what it costs, and this, these, you know, make some phone calls and find out what are the pros and cons and bring that back?
Yeah.
Because if, if we have a work session about it, we're gonna be, we are woefully uninformed to make any kind of decisions like that.
No, I think, I think, no, I think the first thing that I would like to see us do is to bring in people from the other municipalities who have their own police departments in, in the county, in Montgomery County, to talk about what they tried to do and what, how it's ending up. So at least we have some experience to start with in terms of current, and then maybe branch out from there. I think that would be the first thing, the place that I would like to start.
I have a couple more things.
Okay.
I, I don't have a particular opinion about the, the 911 dispatch issue, but, but it strikes me as odd that the dispatcher is our principal security for the building when they have, already have a principal position to answer the telephone, and I just thought that was kind of odd.
That's the same person.
Right. That they're the principal, I mean, they're, they're attached to their desk, I assume they can't walk, do they have a mobile setup where they can walk around? Yeah, that's-
No, they, that's why we have cameras.
Just a comment that, that seems kinda odd.
No, that's why we have the camera installation.
Yeah. Recreation and parks, I don't understand why we pay the, why we pay the park fee. I don't understand, and I, I guess you guys recommend it against it, I don't understand why we would, we try to make savings out of contracting back to the county for things, either that we do get rebate payments from or that we don't get rebate payments from regarding both the, the road issue and also the housing and community development.
What, what's the question about the road issue?
Why we would contract back to the county for work? It seems odd that-
That was the recom-
That was one of the recommendations of the TASI committee.
Yeah, but you, you rejected that, and yeah, and that's-
I, I, yes, the staff looked at it and does not recommend that.
That seems really odd.
We're, we're probably doing things cheaper than the county is.
Yeah, but it also seems odd to me to take on work and then contract it back to them, because they're already paying us two years behind the time and without administrative and overhead costs. So if we were ever in a situation where that was actually what we were doing, I think maybe what we should really be doing in that case is-
Letting them do it.
Yeah, just letting them do it, and that's all I have to comment on.
Terry?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess a, a couple of things I would just like to reinforce what my colleagues have said. I certainly agree with Councilmember Berry that, that one of the things that's woefully lacking in this process is a schedule, and I, I think that that's one of the very first things that the council should be discussing, that our next session is what it is that we hope to be accomplished and, and when we hope to see those things. I would also just observe that, you know, the staff input on this is very important, but that views these recommendations from one particular viewpoint, and that I think it's important that we include community member viewpoints, which certainly would include the Public Safety Advisory Committee's perspective. But I also would like to, to encourage us to go back to some of the members of the TASI Committee, to see if, having had this rest, if they're maybe ready to, to put a little bit more work into some of these recommendations to help us to understand some of the implications. I agree with Mayor Porter that, that one of the next steps should probably be to, to discuss with other municipalities not only how they do this shared leasing, but I would also encourage us to look at, at one of the core issues here, and that is the state law governing rebates, and that it's, definitely gives the strong suit to the county. And I think we should, should start working with the other municipalities, not just, and how do we address the county, and bring, you know, try to strengthen our hand by numbers, but also putting this as one of our legislative initiatives for the state, for changing the law so that the municipalities come to the table with a little stronger hand, even if we are still only approaching the, the strength of the hand that the county has in rebate negotiations.
My understanding is that this has come up before MML, and it has never made a priority because MML doesn't feel it has much of a chance of happening. They're simply looking at the proportion of the state population that lives in municipalities versus the proportion of the state population that doesn't, and it's only about 15% lives in municipalities. So if you look at it as a zero-sum game, which the delegates and senators have, I mean, you don't, anybody who can count knows which way they're going, in terms of giving more power to the municipalities. That's, that's your basic problem.
But as I understand it, different, I mean, different counties have different rebate formulas, and I think it's in Arundel or whatever, Annapolis is, is in, is a very different rebate formula than we do, and that Prince George's County, as we know, uses differently than we do.
They have tax differentials.
So is, so is it, so is it a matter of looking to the Montgomery delegation to get, the delegation to put in Montgomery County-specific legislation that we're changing for Montgomery County, as other counties have been changed, rather than trying to convince the whole state to make some sweeping change that affects everybody in the whole state? I mean, it seems to me this is a discussion to have with one of our delegates or senators and say, is this, is this something that can be done with local legislation, which I think would be simpler than trying to get the whole state to do it.
I think that the state legislation doesn't address whether it's a tax differential or a rebate. I think the state legislation, there's only two, there's only two variations in the state legislation. It either says counties shall rebate or counties may rebate, and very fortunately for us, we're in a shall county, but there's a number of counties in the state where it just says the county may rebate. In those cases, the county, if it feels like giving the municipality some money, does, and if it doesn't, it doesn't. Many of those counties, or at least the ones I can think of off the top of my head, are counties where the county is fairly rural, the municipality does everything itself anyway because the county does basically nothing, and so it's not so much of an issue, because since the county does very little and taxes very little, it's, it's less of an issue. My understanding, and, and we could investigate this a little further, is that it's up to the county whether they wanna do a rebate like, like we get from Montgomery County, or a tax differential like we used to do with Prince George's.
Yeah, in Prince George's, they actually have a combination. Some of the municipalities have rebates, some have tax differentials, and some have both.
Right. But Prince George's, in other words, the, the county tax within the municipality is lower than the county tax outside the municipality, and basically what you do is the municipality, which has its own downsides, is you then raise your own municipal tax rate to compensate for the lowering of the county tax rate, and that's how you get the money back. But, and that is in fact why some of the Prince George's municipalities have the, the tax rates that they do. So I think that that would be something that we would deal with, and I don't even think it would take state legislation, I think the county could do it if it wanted to. I don't even, I, because I don't think the state legislation addresses that issue unless I'm misinformed.
No, it doesn't, and that's, that's part of the reason that in these recommendations, I've said that, you know, how we negotiate with, with the county executive staff could be very important, because we can find ways around some of these other provisions, like the 17% ask-back income tax cap and that kind of thing, as part of negotiations with Montgomery County directly.
The, the tax differential, I mean, Prince George's municipalities complain about the same problems we do. The, the, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily make your negotiating hand stronger. What it does mean is that once the, the amount of money you get is set, it's set, and you can't do what Montgomery does to us, which is every year they say, well, we're gonna do this, and oh, and we're taking some back, and we're taking some back, and we're taking some back. Once it's set, it's set. But it is true that you can still end up with less money than you think you deserve.
Right, but I mean, it also opens up the ability, the ability, it seems to me, for us to say, we would like to do the tax differential, this is what we think the city tax should be based on, across the city services, and we're gonna analyze what services you provide our citizens, and that's what we're gonna give you for that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we could do that.
I mean, there are multiple ways to go at that and, and offer solutions that may be fairer, and I think we ought to be preparing to come to the table with a variety of different solutions at this point.
Are there other comments? Where, where I think we are in terms of next steps, is it seems to me that there are some, there are some recommendations where the, the staff is recommending that they move forward. Most of them have to do with dealing with the, the formulas surround- Most of them have to do with dealing with the formulas surrounding rebates, you know, renegotiating things, and I assume that the council is just comfortable saying, as long as it doesn't affect services, if we're talking about, you know, renegotiating, for example, the police rebate, I'm looking at, for example, under police services, number one, yes, and two, yes. Then there's some bigger ones, and I'm again looking at police. The shared patrol model, obviously this is something people want to talk about. We did, we talked a little bit about communications and dispatch, it sounds like people want to talk some more about that. I don't know whether, it seems to me if we do that, we might as well talk about the third one that affected police services, which is the criminal investigation, since it overlaps so much with the issue of dispatch in terms of how things would function. And so I think we could have one discussion of those items and sort of decide after some extensive discussion what we want to do with it. Under public works, I don't, I didn't see, I mean, it sounded to me like the council wanted to drop the issue of the road maintenance, county doing road maintenance, and perhaps other than using public works as an example of the kinds of things that we would like to say to the county, you should take over, there wasn't really a big interest in pursuing things that are other than the rebate for road maintenance, renegotiating that, and the, the other two things which have to do with the road maintenance and park, well, the road maintenance expenditure.
Park, yes.
And then in terms of recreation and parks, I think that's a little bit more, a little bit more difficult to think about, and my recommendation would be that we make that another issue that we talk about. And then I think the final one would be talking about the general issue that Mark brought up about strategy in terms of dealing with, talking to the county about how much, in other words, saying to them, well, if you had to do this, how much would it cost you to do it? And then in the same thing, because I think they're very similar, is sort of talking about the issue of if we were to work out the rebate in a different way, what that would look at. That's sort of the bigger and, and sort of process, bigger process type issues. So I'm seeing those as, as separate discussions. Is the council comfortable with that?
Yeah, if I can just comment that the, that the area in here on parks, that's at the end of public works, I think in many ways can be rolled into the discussion on recreation and parks, since my understanding is that most people kind of do parks as part of recreation, not as part of public works, and that in many ways it's easier to have the discussion and looking at it.
So I, I was doing recreation, I was including that as recreation and parks.
Right, but it's just making sure that we get that number four from under public works.
I think I repeated the point, though, under recreation and parks. For that reason, it is, it's listed separately for one reason, but, but it has the same answer.
Right.
And I'm also, and I backing up a little bit, I'm also assuming that under housing and community development, that the recommendation number one goes into our overall category, which is requesting rebate for things that we're not currently being rebated for. So I'm, I'm coming up with three follow-ups. One on police services, one on parks and recreation, and that more talking about the details of the rebate and what, what we get rebated for and what we don't. And the third one being sort of the whole issue of additional rebates for things we're not getting rebates for, what, the, the strategy of sort of saying to the county or looking at things as if the county had to do them, what they would cost, and then the whole issue of ways that we could get additional rebates, or ways that we could change the law to put ourselves in a better position. So those are the three I've got as follow-ups. Does that make sense?
And that category-
The resident service.
Hmm?
The resident service.
The what?
The resident service.
Oh, yes. Well, my understanding is that that's moving forward at the point at which the staff will be able to do it. And I assume it'll come back to us before it does, right?
Oh, yeah.
I would like to see us set a date certain when that is going to happen. It's been dragging on for far too long.
And at one point, we dragged it.
Okay.
Exclusively.
So that's a, that would be something to come back with. Okay. We have a request from Buddy Daniels who wanted to be worked into the program. He wasn't able to be here for citizen comment, and I wanted to make sure that the staff who are here for specific items got a chance to do their items. But we're just about to take a break, but I'll give you a couple of minutes, Buddy, if you want to.
He only wanted 30 seconds.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, 30 seconds.
Thirty seconds is all I need. Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue. I just wanted to thank the Tacoma Foundation and people who voted for me. I was apparently nominated for an Azalea Award at, this last Saturday, in neighborhood leadership, and I want to thank anyone who voted for me and certainly thank everyone for the nomination. I was not able to attend the ceremonies because I had to work. As you know, I work in the swimming pool industry and retail, and we were really busy. Howard Coe was nice enough to represent me there. But again, I want to thank everyone, and I think it was probably because of the work we're doing with emergency preparedness, and I still want to emphasize it's a group effort, and that group is, is growing. I picked up another member on the outreach committee today. But thank you to the people who voted for me, and I'm sorry I couldn't be there Saturday. I'm really honored. I mean, they say it's, it's great to be nominated, and it really is, especially when I saw the old list of nominees, it's like, whoa.
Yes, about 30 people long.
Whoa.
It was huge.
And everybody, you know, certainly involved-
A great tribute to our community.
Absolutely. And again, I was sorry I couldn't be there, and thank you again. And that's, I want to say that publicly, and I'll, I'll thank the foundation at one of their meetings, because it really does mean a lot. It was an honor to be nominated. So thank you again, and thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Okay, thanks, Buddy.
And by the way, Buddy, I ate your refreshments. Thank you.
That's where the Budweiser went.
Terry.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a short break and come back for the budget work session.[1020.32]
And we will continue with the items on our agenda, the final item. Last but certainly not least is the work session regarding the budget for housing and community development. And did you want to start?
Yeah, I'll just make some introductory comments and then I think there's some attachments included in the agenda packet that I'd like Sarah to walk through. As mentioned in the blue agenda cover sheet, the proposed operating budget for the Housing and Community Development Department as revised to reflect the actual cost of employee health insurance in '07 is $1,356,373. This is a budget that probably, as proposed, would have one of the larger increases among the city operating budgets. Projected increase would be in the neighborhood of $264,000 or just over 24 percent. Many of the items that would be considered new initiatives in HCD's budget were discussed by the council earlier this year during the council priorities and goal-setting session, and I'll just touch on those briefly. As has been discussed previously, there is an additional code enforcement officer included in Sarah's departmental budget, which would be intended to provide for more timely and proactive property maintenance, particularly along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. Also related to the New Hampshire Avenue corridor redevelopment, as well as other development issues in the city, included in this budget is an additional planning intern that would conduct research and perform some other functions. There is $100,000 included in this budget for specialized consulting, planning services to provide assistance with various development issues, some of which are already in play and others that may come up during the course of '07. There's funding for marketing and promotional materials related to the redevelopment of the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. And as has been discussed by the council, you had asked previously for some funding to be included, perhaps to do some traffic studies on a more neighborhood-wide basis instead of just dealing with speed bumps essentially. And there is $25,000 included in this budget for neighborhood traffic studies. Depending on the extent of the study and the scope, that would probably pay anywhere from maybe one to three, depending on how wide an area we're talking about. Those are really the major changes, I guess, that are reflected in this budget. When talking to Sarah in terms of trying to identify some issues that we thought might be of benefit to the council as part of its budget deliberations, one of the things Sarah had suggested was basically an update on the Affordable Housing Policy and Action Plan, and included in the agenda packet is a status report, and she can kind of walk you through those. Councilmember Elrich, I believe it was, had asked for some additional information about code enforcement activities, just clarifying who does what and how the current code enforcement officer spends her time. So with that, I will turn it over to Sarah, and she can kind of go through some of the attachments, and then certainly staff would be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. One of the things before I begin, and what I would like to point out, is that in the Housing and Community Development Department, there are generally five categories, ranging from code enforcement and landlord tenant to affordable housing and planning. All, with the exception of landlord tenant and COLTA, are addressed in some shape or fashion in the priorities that you established earlier this year for this upcoming budget. Landlord tenant will continue to do its outreach to the landlords and the tenants, and will be looking at doing some publications this year in bilingual and to address some of the changes that have taken place in procedures and regulations over the last year and a half. COLTA will be spending most of its time on rent stabilization in terms of recodifying the ordinance, developing regulations, and then putting together the printed materials that we'll need to be able to get the word out regarding whatever changes are adopted by the council. With that, as city managers indicated, I've included just a status report regarding our affordable housing plan and the activities that have taken place in the last year to see that plan and accomplish the short-term goals that were identified in it. The plan, if you recall, was adopted in July of 2005, and frankly, I think we've done a lot towards accomplishing those short-term goals. Right now, we have a .9 FTE that works towards the Affordable Housing Program, though we do have a number of contracts in place that help us with that process. The first is with our capacity building initiative, Roseanne Look and Mario Cristaldo, who you've either met or have read about in the SNIs. And then we also have a contract with our Affordable Housing Home Buyer Club. Essentially, with the capacity building initiative, we've worked with a number of properties: Hampshire Towers, 1,001 to 1,003 University Boulevard, two properties on Flower, and one on Erie Avenue to facilitate the formation of a tenants' association and to help them go through the process of deciding whether or not they'd like to proceed with the purchase of their rental facility. That assistance has come anywhere from making connections to attorneys, to helping them go through the request for proposals process and identifying a developer that they'd like to work with. And others have been simple organizational things in terms of how to deal with your landlord if you have ongoing property maintenance complaint concerns. They were also instrumental in helping us pull together some of the legislative language that was developed for the proposed condominium conversion initiative that was presented at the state legislators this year. Then for the Home Buyers Club on the next page, that we graduated our first class this year. We started out with 30, and six of them were able to fulfill all the obligations as far as getting HUD certified. We're looking at different ways of structuring that this upcoming year so we have a greater graduation rate, if you will, and also to expand the offerings, to do more consumer credit counseling and things like that. Then the balance of the report identifies the activities that have been taking place for the tax credit program, the website, the landlord certification program. We've started research in partnership with MHP regarding the land trust, and we've done a lot of research on the vacant and abandoned properties initiative we talked about in the Affordable Housing Plan. Other things that are included in the budget under the Affordable Housing Initiative for next year includes continuing the capacity building program. There is funding in the budget to provide assistance in doing some of the survey work that will be required under the vacant and abandoned properties initiative. We have continued the Affordable Housing Evolving Loan Fund, although that may be restructured, and continued participation in the housing fair in partnership with Montgomery County. Are there any questions about the steps that have been taken thus far to implement the Affordable Housing Plan?
I have a question. Under the condominium legislation one on page three, were the city doing tenant organizing to organize tenants to advocate for particular legislative changes?
A number of the tenants who became very familiar with a number of tenants through that process and assisted them in their efforts. Frankly, there were one or two that were particularly involved in terms of lobbying for that at the county and the state level.
And the city staff was?
Our primary responsibility at that point was to provide information and make referrals in terms of who would be an appropriate person to contact. The biggest challenge we've got with the condominium conversion is there's so many different levels, and if you read, if you think the rent stabilization ordinance is tricky, sit down and read the condominium conversions legislation. It's equally obtuse in many ways. So a lot of it was just working people through that process in terms of letting them know what their rights and responsibilities were, both from a tenant and landlord perspective, but then also to provide them with information in terms of some of the initiatives that the city was proposing and sponsoring, or asking for sponsors.
On the housing tax credit program, can you give us an indication of how many people have participated in that last year and what the cost has been to the city?
I can't get, I don't have that information. We can get that for you. We generally do the outreach and the education component of it, and then the actual application and the numbers is through the finance department, I believe.
Councilmember Seaman, I'm going off memory here. I think we had some discussion of this last year during the budget process. My recollection is in FY '05, it was roughly, we spent about maybe $35,000 to $40,000. We can get you the exact number. The way this works is someone applies essentially for the credit through the state. We get that list and then basically do the matching part, but we'd certainly be happy to get that information for you if it's readily available.
I appreciate that because, as I recalled during our budget discussions last year, we increased the amount of money we were putting into that, and I just wanted to see whether that actually, whether our outreach efforts were successful.
My recollection, Mr. Hobson, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we left the amount of money the same. It's $50,000. I think that had been the amount in FY '05. We left it the same in '06 because we hadn't expended the full pool, if you will. So even with the increase in the percentage that the city was paying, we raised the credit, I think it was from 30 percent to 50 percent. We felt that the funding at that level could stay the same and still serve the same number of people.
Okay. And I also, and this is maybe a little off-target, but I wondered, for our outreach in the coming year, you know, this is one of the areas where our escalating taxes through, you know, the increase in assessments is really creating hardship on very low income, or those on fixed income in the city, such as some of our elderly residents who whose income doesn't escalate at the same rate as their housing assessments do. And I wonder if there's, if we have any way of targeting those for flyer in our outreach efforts during this coming year?
We can investigate that.
The Home Buyers Club, so six of the 30 residents initially registered, graduated. Was that the only people who made it through? Did attendance drop off? Was it that not all of the people who participated to the end did it all? How successful was it?
We have mixed feelings about it, frankly. Folks started out very gung-ho, and then tenants started dropping off and varying. So someone who had come to the March class would not be there for April but would show up in May, kind of a thing. And to obtain the HUD certification, you have to meet a minimum attendance requirement. We're looking at different ways of structuring that. We had decided to proceed with a year-long club or class, if you will, and that frankly might be too long. So we're looking at ways of compressing it to make it a little longer for each session and then be able to do it in a month. So like every Tuesday night for the month of March, you go to your class and then you get the certification process. We're also looking at ways that we can reach out to the Spanish-speaking population, and we're looking at offering it in Spanish this year. But the reviews, the evaluation forms that came back from those that attended that particular class that we sent them out, came back very positively. They enjoyed the instructor, they felt the speakers were very informative, and that the materials were very helpful. So we're just, we're trying to figure out what some of the things we could change, and I think basically it's just too long.
And did any of the graduates put their knowledge to practical use, did you know it?
They just graduated two weeks ago. No, but that will be one of the things we follow up with people after a while.
Do I have any information on what happens to people after they use the tenant opportunity to purchase program? And one of the reasons why I ask this question is because in the work that I do, there is some indication that there's a lot of energy put on counseling before you buy your home and not as much or any energy put into helping people remain in homeownership. And I was just wondering if we knew how successful people were once they purchased their homes or how difficult it would be to find out how many people stayed.
We can look at different ways of researching that. Frankly, the numbers are fairly low right now in terms of the people that have actually been able to acquire and live in their place for over a year. One of the things that we're looking at as an option for restructuring the Home Buyers Club is to address that variation in terms of, okay, now you've got a house or an apartment, how do you keep it? How do you do the simple maintenance things? How do you continue to make sure that you have money set aside for mortgage instead of your rent payment for that particular month? But right now, we don't have any hard data in terms of the success of each of these initiatives, but we can go through and look.
Yeah, just, you know, a simple look at, we probably know which properties people purchase through the tenant opportunity to purchase program. We should probably go to the tax records and find out how long those people stayed.
I've actually done a little bit of that with the Phoenix, just on the block, and I'll pull that together and give you that.
That'd be interesting.
Did you want to go through the other part of this, or?
The second memorandum that's included in the agenda packet is just an overview of our code enforcement activities. There is, as far as been indicated, a request in the FY '07 budget for another full-time inspector. Right now, we have one inspector who also oversees the division and a program assistant. And then we have a very small amount of money set aside for a very, very part-time, temporary, seasonal inspector. And for a variety of reasons, they've never, ever been able to fill that, so it's been a challenge. And if the budget's approved, then we'll have two inspectors and a program assistant that will facilitate it. There's been some question regarding who's responsible for enforcing which of the various code and who has different inspection responsibilities, and I've tried to address that within the memorandum. Basically, it boils down to two different factors. What is the use of the land or the building in question, and what the specific code that's being broken, if you will? We end up making a lot of referrals. Not everything is basically a property maintenance code violation. It can be a zoning violation, as council member Barry is well aware of. Could be someone who's going ahead and doing work without the required building permits or hasn't received a historic area work permit. So we do make a lot of referrals. We've involved the Department of Health, the Department of, the State Department of the Environment, as well as permitting services, the planning staff, et cetera. And the code enforcement officer that we have generally facilitates that review process. Frankly, it's challenging when you're working with outside agencies in terms of the turnaround time, and they also have similar staff capacity issues that we have in Tacoma Park. From a zoning perspective, I believe there's just one inspector for basically the southern half of Montgomery County, which is pretty big. So once you get into the queue, it may take a while to get that particular inspection or complaint resolved or even identified as being a complaint.
I have a question, two actually. One is, what is the difference between what Marjorie does and what Rudy does? Rudy Rice?
Rudy Rice, who is the nuisance officer, public nuisance officer with the police department, tends to focus on, like, property maintenance, well, nuisance complaints in the public right of way. So, and does animal control, he does some parking.
He does a lot of noise, as you're well aware, kind of noise complaints.
So both of these individuals now, Marjorie and Rudy, are pretty much fully occupied with the number of calls and activities that fit their particular job description and expertise?
I can't speak for Rudy, but I know that Marjorie is more than fully occupied. If you go and look at the activities in terms of the amount that's broken down, she is unfortunately able to only spend about a third of her time during the week on property maintenance code inspections, just general inspections, commercial properties, owner-occupied properties, vacant lots. The balance of it is occupied with the rental housing licensing program and oversight of the contract with the county. So from her perspective, she would be very disappointed if I didn't say she was overextended.
Well, and I know certainly that the backlog in my part of town seems to be considerable and growing, but I would be remiss if I didn't ask the question, and that is, what will the city get by adding a second officer?
Basically, what we'll have is an individual that will be able to concentrate on the property maintenance code and complaints that we get and to follow up on the inspections. The challenge we have right now is fitting the inspections into the Marjorie's schedule, the important follow-up inspection, and then the paperwork that's required. What I've tried to convey in the memorandum is that it would be great if it's just going out there, running into the property owner and saying, get rid of the vacant, or get rid of the unlicensed vehicle, and then get it 15 minutes later. Unfortunately, that's not how it generally works. There's a lot of paperwork and research that is often involved in terms of identifying who owns the property and then doing the written notifications that we have to, that have to take place in order for us to develop an argument that if we end up going to court, supports the fine or the penalty that we're requesting. We also have a lot of people that are very responsive, and will come in, and there's a lot of one-on-one time spent with the property owner, just identifying why this is an issue, what needs to be resolved, what the options might be for resolving it. And occasionally, we'll run into a property owner that has neglected their property, not because of indifference to it, but for health reasons or mental health reasons or financial reasons, they're just not in a position to do that. So we end up doing a lot of referrals to social service agencies, to the county for funding, et cetera.
When I was looking at this, I very much appreciate the detailed activities. When I was looking at this...
When I was looking at this, it struck me that a lot of the things that are, that you, we have a code enforcement officer do are fairly clerical in that we don't necessarily need somebody with code enforcement expertise to do. Verification of compliance, submission of annual rent, of compliance with COLTA orders, rent reports, verification of ownership, all those kinds of things, all that research, I don't know that you need to be a code enforcement officer to do it.
The, the challenge we've had this past year, past two years basically, is keeping the program assistant position full. We have a vacancy right now. So the other reality is when we get the additional inspector and we've made an offer for, to another individual for the program assistant position, that some of that activity will switch over to the program assistant once they get, are familiar with the process and the procedures. One of the things that we've identified when you're going back through past licensing, property records and stuff, was that a lot of that verification wasn't done sufficiently. And people were getting licenses that had not complied with all of the requirements of the city's ordinance. So Marjorie is very diligent about making sure that everything that's a requirement of the prop, of the licensing ordinance is, has been satisfied, which takes time, especially now with some of the state requirements, particularly as far as lead prevention is concerned. Just walking people through the whole lead abatement process and the certification that they have to go through and the testing that they have to do and the notification to their tenants and the retesting when the units are vacated, takes time and can delay the whole, the whole licensing process. And if people don't follow the deadlines that we've set up for them, then we go through and do the issue of notice of violation and municipal infractions. So yes, on the surface, it does appear like there's a lot of paperwork. Some of it's from a staffing standpoint, others are because of concern that, that the licenses are appropriately issued.
Yeah, I, I don't quarrel with the fact that that's important and I definitely think we should do it and we should go all the way through. I guess where, my concern is, I'm, in looking at this, I'm not convinced that we need a second code enforcement officer. It strikes me that perhaps what we need is another person who can do that research and who can do the paperwork, freeing our code enforcement officer to actually do inspections and overseeing the contract to the extent that that needs to be done and that that's not clerical work. As I looked at the list of things, it struck me that a lot of these are not things that you need to be a person who's an expert in inspecting facilities to be able to do and that somebody who is familiar with the law and not, and somebody who was, who is familiar with the law, who is familiar with the requirements and who knew how to do the research could do, but they wouldn't necessarily have to be a code inspector to be able to do it.
The, the code enforcement specialist, which is technically Marjorie's title, is more than just an inspector, she is an administrator too.
Right.
I mean, her primary responsibility is not just inspections, she's responsible for the administration of the program.
Right.
So that will not, that responsibility will not go away. She has staff oversight.
But half of it, half of it appears to be, or close to half of it, appears to be things that somebody who was neither overseeing the contract nor was a qualified inspector would, you wouldn't have to have somebody who was either of those things to be able to do.
And that's why I'm hoping that when we get the program, the new program assistant in place and get them fully trained and comfortable with all of the procedures and the software programs that they have, is that more of Marjorie's time will free up to do inspections. Frankly though, I don't think it will be enough time to address some of the code violation concerns that have been addressed by the council, particularly Councilman Barry and his ward. The number of general property maintenance complaints that we're getting is increasing and frankly, we're in a backlog and things that should take 45 to 60 days to resolve at a maximum are taking much longer than that. So while on the surface, it appears that though a lot of it's administrative at this point in time, I'm not disagreeing with that, but not, she won't free up 100% of her time to be able to go out and do inspections. A lot of the paperwork that is a result of the inspections also needs to be done by the inspector and it can't be done by a clerical person in terms of writing up the violations, doing the research to make sure that the citations are appropriate and that the language is, is in keeping with the requirements of the ordinance itself. So whoever's hired for this position, assuming it's approved, will not be out inspecting 100% of the time. They will still be doing a fair amount of paperwork, if you will.
Yeah, that, my, my general concern, and I've, I've said the same thing in past years, I have a general concern about adding to staff. Because unlike other kinds of expenditures, it's something that once it goes into the budget, it comes up year after year after year. And unless we fire somebody, which we have been loath to do, I think appropriately, we shouldn't be doing that unless somebody, you know, is not meeting the requirements of their job. But once we add to staff, we have, you know, benefits for that person and they're in the budget sort of more or less on a permanent basis. And so my, I have much more of a concern about adding staff than I do about putting in other things that are equivalent costs into the budget because those things can be, are more flexible in terms of moving them around in future years. And so just speaking for myself, the sort of the hurdle to be overcome in, in adding staff is much higher than the hurdle to be overcome in other kinds of expenses in the budget. And so I'm looking very closely at all the, at all the requests for additions of staff. And on this one, it seemed, just on the basis of what's in here, I'm not convinced that there isn't something that we could do, maybe find someone who had certain kinds of experience that didn't include code inspection, maybe get some additional time for a lower-level position that wouldn't free up enough of Marjorie's time that she could do the required level of code enforcement that we couldn't sort of get through at least some of the backlog. I'm also concerned when we say we're hiring another person to get through backlog, I mean, once the backlog's through, we're not going to fire the person. I mean, we're sort of just adding on layers because of a, of a situation that may be only temporary.
The position was proposed in response to concerns that we could be doing more in terms of property maintenance code enforcement, targeted enforcement in areas where there has been identified cycle of problems. Councilman Barry is at Lockwood. You know, he could be out there every 15 minutes and find something new that you didn't notice the last time that was out there that has taken place since then. This particular position would frankly expand the inspection services that we provide and would address the, the concerns again that have been voiced by various council members. Frankly speaking, I don't think we can do it without another person.
My recollection is originally this was a commercial code inspection and it was tied to a licensing fee where we were going to do for commercial properties and that was going to pay for the additional inspector. And then we discovered that we couldn't, it was going to be too much trouble, I can't remember what the reason was, we couldn't do the commercial licensing. I think it was going to end up costing us more than we were going to get for it, if I remember correctly. But this, but this code enforcement person is still there, even though we don't have a, an outside source of, of support. And I know that our code enforcement staff has varied over time. There's times that we've had more people and times we've had fewer people. But I guess I'm just, I'm, I'm, I could be convinced, I'm not yet convinced that we really do need a whole nother specialist, code enforcement specialist, to do the kinds of things that we need to do in order to deal with the problems.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Before I start, I would just like to express support for Mayor Porter's questions. And I'm left to wonder if, you know, it does look like there are a lot of, of more junior level activities that are done, a high percentage of the activities are more junior level. And I wonder if, if maybe it wouldn't be helpful to have you rethink that and see if there isn't some other way to structure this, not to say that, that we wouldn't hire another person, but if the job itself couldn't be restructured in a way so that people with the higher paid skills are spending majority of their time doing the, the, the more difficult tasks and leaving the more mundane tasks to the less skilled individual and therefore the lower cost individual. As I read this, the, I, this is primarily commercial inspections that we're talking about, or do, does this inspector also do rental housing, maintenance, problems around rental housing units? And what about privately owned residences?
The inspection responsibilities are assigned, as I indicated, by the, the use of the property. So anything that has to do with rental residential housing, be it trash in the front yard or a car or burst pipes, gets referred to Montgomery County and the code enforcement officers there go through and do the inspections. They do the annual licensing inspections as well as the complaint inspections. If it's a commercial property or your house owner occupied residential, an institutional facility, a vacant lot, parking lot, then that all remains with the city and the city's responsible for going out, doing the inspection, determining whether or not it's an appropriate violation or under our code. And if not, transferring it over to or referring it to another agency for investigation.
Okay, so this code inspection would do such things as inspecting complaints that a neighbor hadn't trimmed their hedge back away from the sidewalk?
We do a lot of that, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Could I just, I forgot to ask one question. How much is budgeted for the additional code enforcement officer?
It is a level 28.
But that, so it would be salary and benefits though?
Correct.
So what is that?
Do you remember? I don't have the spreadsheet.
I think it was, the combination of the salary and benefits was approximately $55,000, more or less.
That's kind of what I think.
Fifty-five thousand. Can we put this on the reconciliation list? Because I'd like to discuss this at the end when we get all the other things together.
Yeah, certainly, we, obviously this was put in the budget originally based on the council direction from earlier this year, but we'd be happy to put anything on the reconciliation list. The only other comment I would just like to add, which the council has always asked me to do, is as we go through all these items in the budget, ultimately what these positions represent is what service level this council wants to have. So if it's acceptable that there is a, in terms of trying to balance budgetary expenditures versus how long people wait for problems to be addressed, that's ultimately a council determination. So I'm not saying which way is right or wrong. What I'm saying is these things ultimately translate into service levels and that's the policy decision this council's charged with making.
I hate that argument.
It's a valid one though.
Well, the reason I hate it is, is that there's this assumption that you can't look at how the resources you have now and do things better and reshuffle within or be more efficient. And so it's always if you want better, you have to spend more. And sometimes I think there are other ways to go about doing it. I mean, I, I share Kathy's concern that, that a lot of what's identified in the list of things for this person to do, or that the current person is doing, are, is catch-up. And I don't like the idea of putting in a full-time position to compensate for the fact that we've got a lot of catch-up, particularly the paperwork stuff. I think in turn, coming in to work on, you know, the filing and cleaning up the paperwork, I mean, I know what a mess the records are, but once, once the record's in order, for example, the lead spate, lead paint certificates are in and everything else is in, that's not a problem that's going to replicate itself year after year. So I would rather look at, at a short-term solution that had more flexibility than, than bringing in the code inspector. And since both Carrie and Kathy said most of it, I wanted to say, the only other thing I'll add is, I mean, we rely a lot on the inspector to go out and find stuff. And I would really like to get to the point where everybody in the city employ saw itself as a team, because I'm sure all the things that Doug identified in his ward were things that could have been seen by the driver of the sanitation truck or the officers that drove through the neighborhood and that, given our level of technology and computers sitting in police cars, that a note could have been made, it could have been forwarded to.
But they will.
They will work. And if not, there is still pencil and paper. But whatever it is, that this information could, could be brought forward so that an inspector doesn't have to go out and drive every street in the ward, because we've got eyes on all the streets, that we should use all the eyes we have, that would take some of the load off the inspectors.
Mark makes a good point, but he's fallen into my rhetorical trap. And, and that is, if you have all of these people going, from the city, going about the streets, finding things, then what you're going to need is another person to do the inspection. That is, it's going to increase the calls for someone like Marjorie and you'll want a person that's out there or people who are out there even more frequently citing people, working with them to clear up the problem.
But I would ever, ever so rather pay for that based on the number of calls rather than knowing that these people are doing a lot of catching up and cleaning up of a previous mess and that's necessitating the need for another person. At least if it's a lot of call volume, that to me says that there's a lot of work to be done. This just says we're doing other stuff.
If I can just make a few comments, I, I think staff isn't disagreeing with anything what you're saying. And obviously, I can point to changes that have been made within my own department in terms of restructuring duties and positions being cut. So I don't disagree with you. The one thing I will also assure the council is other city staff members do note things that are not necessarily, they're not their primary job functions. When you're talking about inspections however, there are only certain people who are designated by law who can write infractions. So while a sanitation employee may see something, that inspector, whomever that is, is still going to have to go out and personally witness it before she or he or she is going to be willing to put their name on a violation and be initiating a legal process. So it's certainly a very good heads up. I don't disagree with that. And that does happen, I think, during the course of everyone's work. But I just want to make sure everyone's clear, and to get it started into the enforcement process legally, that's going to be the code enforcement inspector, because he or she is the only one charged by law with being able to write that, just as no other city employee can go write a violation for the city arborist. So it, it does work and it does happen, but there are some limitations on that just by law.
We work, we've worked very closely with the police department, for example, and the public works department in terms of they making referrals to us, but then we also assist them in particular properties that they've had an ongoing concern about being a drug activity or things like that. Marjorie, for example, the other, we came into the work at nine o'clock at night to help shut down one of the crack houses that they identified and going through in terms of condemning it and boarding, getting it boarded up and everything like that. So there is a lot of interaction between the departments. The other thing I just want to clarify is we're not, the, the property files and all of the issues that the department was known for historically, some of the things you're referencing, that has all been cleaned up. This is basically just making sure, we're just going through and implementing the requirements of the ordinance and working people, walking people through the process to address their concerns and get the issues that they are unable to or unwilling to address resolved. And the lead paint thing has thrown a lot of people for, for a loop, even though it's been on the books for years. And a lot of this stuff just takes time. It's just a lot of hand-holding, a lot of telephone conversations and walk-in. So it's not just paperwork, it's a lot of interaction with the community.
But it sounds like things that you don't have to be a licensed, an authorized person, as the city manager was talking about, to be able to do.
Generally, to some degree, no, but to a large degree, yes, in terms of clarifying what the ordinance requirements are and of understanding how you might be able to resolve a particular complaint. We've got some inspections, overgrown vegetation, you know, I can go out and inspect that. But the legal staff is very specific in terms of how violations have to be issued, how they have to be served, you know. There are a variety of things. I understand your arguments and we'll go back and look at it, but the reality is, while on the surface it looks like the property or the code enforcement specialist is, is basically doing paperwork, it's not. It's a lot of personal time and interaction with the people that are placing the complaint as well as working with the property owners themselves.
I have a couple of questions. I'm kind of inclined to go along with the, the people who've raised concerns about this, adding this position. I, I'm open to being convinced that it's the only way to go, but I'm not convinced right now. I, I would appreciate information that I requested about the county's resources, the potential for us to contract with them for the services. I heard that there was one inspector for the southern area. How many inspectors are there for the entire county?
That's a zoning inspector. It's a different ordinance and then different division or different department at the county level. The city could go and contract out for commercial inspections with the county inspection staff at the housing. There's a cost associated with that. You could do it. You could do it, there's a cost associated with it.
I'd like to get much more specific information about that. I requested it either last week or the week before and expected to have it for this discussion. The other thing that, when I look at expanding this department to broaden our commitment to the community, I'm concerned that where we've already broadened our commitment to the community is with this community center and the recreation department therefore needs to be upstaffed so that they can meet their mission. The, similarly in the gardening division. We have many beautiful areas of our city that are on public property. We have right-of-ways that need to be attended to and anytime we talk about inspecting private property, I want to make sure that we aren't the pot calling the kettle black and that we have our house in order. So for those reasons, I would see an extra position being needed and I would appreciate the, the city manager focusing on the recreation and gardening areas because I believe that's where we have made previous commitments and now we need to fulfill the obligation there. If, if expanding the commercial inspection is, is essential, we can make that commitment, but I think we have to take care of the commitments we already have. And then the last question I have about it is program assistant turnover. Do we know what, what factors are influencing that?
Both of the people that left the position left for better paying positions.
Thank you. Just two quick things. One, I just wanted to make it clear that when I was suggesting maybe a lower paying position might be able to do some of the functions, I wasn't talking about decreasing service levels, but just doing the job more efficiently. And the other thing I just, since we're on the subject of FTEs, I wonder if, Barb, can you tell me how many, what the net change in FTEs is in the proposed budget for this year overall?
It's in the, it's in the FTE chart.
Yeah.
Plus 3.1.
Okay. Thank you.
Another question, and that is, all cities are different of course, but do you have any data about whether one inspector is sufficient for a city of this size with this number of commercial and residential units?
I don't. I can see that I can find.
That, that might be, that might be helpful because, I mean, it's very clear that a sweep every quarter in, in Ward Six area is simply not sufficient to provide the kind of level of service that the citizens of Ward Six are expecting. And as you've noticed, the housing stock certainly has declined and deteriorated in its quality over the last two or three years and I get numerous complaints from citizens. I drive around and I see absolutely awful things, which, you know, Marjorie has been quite good on an emergency basis of going out there and citing people who are piling mattresses and, and other junk on the curbside and dozens of automobiles in driveways that are untagged and up on blocks and it's, it's really a blight. It's, it's becoming terrible as you move south from New Hampshire Avenue area down towards the creek, it's, it's just really appalling. And so I don't know how it's done and how it can be done, but the, the folks in, in my area are going to be extremely upset if they, they don't get a better level of service from the current or hopefully the improved code enforcement office.
I, I would agree with that. I guess where I might suggest we do it differently than is proposed is that I think that if we removed, say, the rental housing licensing responsibilities from the code enforcement officer, she would have an additional 18 hours a week to do code enforcement. That was, that's what it seems to me would be a more effective use of her time. I can see where overseeing the rental housing inspections since that's inspections and doing the, the property maintenance code inspections would be appropriate things, but when I'm looking at the list of things on a rental housing licensing, I think maybe we should have a rental housing licensing person who should do all that, leaving her to do the property inspections.
Right. And argument number two, or is it 22? Is that we, of course, have gone on record as a council saying that the revitalization of New Hampshire is one of our major priorities. If you have a deteriorating commercial infrastructure along that area and you're expecting and preaching to our county partners the importance of partnership and we fall down on the job when it comes to commercial inspections, then we haven't done our part. And so that's going to be an area that should get increasing attention by the city and it's hard to imagine being successful at giving that attention if we're constrained by the current staff.
I want to head in a slightly different direction for a second and just ask, is the Action software, what you, what you need, is it working?
We, Margie is a true believer in the Action and uses it all the time to, to file complaints and to follow up with them in terms of what the various steps are. So from our perspective, it's a very good program.
So it's, it's a tool that's working?
Yes.
Okay. Can you explain again this conundrum with commercial inspections? Because, okay, I'll ask.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to understand. The memorandum of agreement that we have with the county is with the Montgomery County Housing and Community Affairs Department, their code enforcement division. It is only for rental housing inspections. They do not do commercial or other inspections. They don't do them in the county as a whole except for targeted areas like in Long Branch or Wheaton or they do, I think they call it their main street approach. So if you've got a rental property here and you notice that two houses down, there's another building or establishment that needs, has severe code violations, they will also write them up.
Okay, so let me back up. So you're saying the county does not do systematic commercial inspection?
Correct, correct.
But they do it for targeted areas?
They do it, they do it for targeted areas. They do inspections for zoning issues, they do inspections for building code. There's no systematic commercial inspection where they go out and they look at every property. You could either contract with the county to, to do the general property maintenance code inspections in Tacoma Park, but there would be a cost associated with it. You could talk to the county about rescinding or repealing our ordinance, which then meant that you would turn it all over to them and use their general property maintenance code standards.
So you're saying if we did that, there's no guarantee that we'd get commercial inspection unless we were targeted?
Correct. It would be on a complaint basis and...
So if we, if we chose to have them do it and contract for it, could we not then assess a fee to the commercial property so they won't be collected as equal to what we contracted for and it works out just fine for us?
You could do that, but I'm not sure. I haven't looked at the numbers for a couple of years. At the time that we did it, it paid for about a quarter. The fee that you were comfortable assessing for the licensing was significantly less than the cost of providing that service in terms of doing an annual inspection and doing the licensing thing. You would still have the licensing responsibilities.
On commercial property?
If you wanted to do it on commercial property, yeah.
So, so all the commercial properties already licensed in Montgomery County? Because they have to be?
I don't think so.
They've, they've got to have commercial licenses in Montgomery County, even if they're in the city of Tacoma Park.
Certain special types of businesses have to have a license. All businesses need, it's not a use in occupancy, it's a certificate of occupancy. They have to have that, but it's not a general business license. It's not that I, not that I have seen.
So the county's not requiring that when they target a special area for inspection, right?
Correct.
So why would we have to do any of that? Why couldn't we just say, we want you to, I don't know, say target New Hampshire Avenue and this is what we want you to inspect. What's it going to cost? And then assess a fee that covers it or covers most of it or covers whatever part we're comfortable covering.
We can talk to them about what the cost would be for that and then see what the cost would be broken out by establishment. Again, when you looked at this back in 2004, the cost of doing that was prohibitively high and you elected not to do that.
But I think like, I don't, I guess I don't, if we don't have to do licensing, it seems to me we shouldn't do licensing. It seems, you shouldn't create any paperwork or any more mess around this than we have to. What we want is the commercial properties inspected. Can we just figure out what it costs to get the commercial properties inspected and decide whether we're willing to, how much of it are we willing to foot the bill and if they'll do it as a matter of fact or if they have to be designated as special? And if none of that works?
We can follow up with someone.
I'd appreciate it. I, I've actually had the conversation with a county official who said that they would be happy to hear from someone from the city to ask about these, these matters. So if we haven't contacted them yet, I, I think we, we really should. And one thing I'm missing from this conversation is we're not talking about defraying the cost of the $55,000 additional person on an annual basis, are we?
No.
But, but then when we talk about contracting with the county, we have to have a, a way of defraying that cost?
That would be one of the things that you would have to, that you'd have to decide. If you contract with the county, there's an implied cost associated with that.
Right. And if it's less than 55,000, then that might be the most cost-effective way for us to proceed.
True.
So we're, we really do need that information and I hope it will be forthcoming.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. You know, I've kind of wandered off in this direction tonight talking about our affordable housing initiatives and our code enforcement because those are the two memos that were included in our packet. But I think our overall purpose of being here is the FY07 budget and, and so I flipped back to that section of my book and I know there are a lot of things you do besides just code enforcement and those affordable housing initiatives. One thing, you know, and I'll preface this with, you know, in the past I have been, I have felt that our budget discussions should be at a more detailed level than they have been and I, and this year they seem to be at even higher level than we've been in the past. But I, I look for things like the Wayfinder sign project, is that?
That's included in your capital improvement budget.
Okay, that's in the...
In the CIP.
The CIP book, okay.
And we have $20,000 allocated for FY07. We're continuing to work with the, the state on getting approval of the designs. They've approved the locations for the Gateway signs, but they have expressed recently some concerns regarding the, the design of the, the lettering. So we're continuing to have those conversations with them, but included in your capital improvement budget is $20,000 for the Gateway Wayfinder signs.
Okay, but staff time is not divided by those, by project like that?
No.
Okay, it's just all lumped under. So if we were to doay with the Gateway or Wayfinder signs, that wouldn't reflect in any change in, in staff costs or administrative costs?
Probably overtime or comp time, but that's about it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So is that only, the only CIP item that you've got is Gateway or Wayfinder?
That's the one that I was asked to highlight. There are a couple of others under the community development block rent program. It's also a special revenue item. I believe Daryl chatted briefly about some of the streetscape improvements that are planned next year or in FY07 we have included in the budget, streetscape improvements along Maple Avenue between Philadelphia and Sherman, I believe. Also some improvements along Colton Lane and it's not in the capital budget, but it's also, but it is in the special revenue budget, some public service activities, which include the Helen Smith Homes, which is an after-school program for at-risk girls, the capacity building program and the SeaSafe initiative up in the university and, or in the Tacoma Langley neighborhood.
Aren't, aren't the Maple Avenue and the ADA accessibility both for FY08?
That is the second, that's another project which would take from basically Sherman to Sligo Creek.
Am I looking at the wrong card?
I think in FY, in, for the FY08, we actually just called it Maple Avenue. The current one is generally CDVG streetscape improvements, but it's for that small section of Maple Avenue.
That clarified it, thank you, yes.
The thing I just find difficult is not tying staff time to the projects. It's hard to see that the projects are really costing us or where, where we could, what we would really save without one of these projects or, you know, where we could juggle things. That's not a question.
We, we don't track our time by project.
Maybe that's something this council should discuss at some point.
I was, I was trying to sort of figure out, if I could just go back for a second and, and beat this code enforcement thing to death a little bit more. I was trying to figure out the cost of the code enforcement officer and I took the, the figure, I'm looking at the budget figure, the budget summary, housing, community development by division and FY07 looking at a code enforcement personnel and then subtracting it, it's more like 77,000 or 70, 77 or 78,000. Is that...
You gotta allow for personnel cost, inflation of personnel costs.
Right.
You're choosing an alternate person.
Right. Okay, that's what I did wrong. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, it's, it's not 70.
So some of that is that like, for example, health insurance increases?
Yes.
Yes, gotcha. Right, thank you. That's why I asked those questions, so I get the answer.
Also cost of living adjustments for existing staff.
Okay. Are there other questions?
We call those performance market adjustments.
Thank you.
Right, they're not called...
Got the jingle down wrong, I'm sorry.
I have a question about the consulting services. Is this going to be a placeholder that'll be drawn on as needed or is there going to...
That's correct.
So, so how are we going to manage what we want to have happen, for example, on New Hampshire Avenue? Are we going to wait for something to happen? Are we going to take some of this and say, task a person with completing X task of identifying or working with certain parties to come up with a plan? Or are we going to respond to piece by piece things that might or might not happen on New Hampshire Avenue? Because it seems to me this is the one place where it'd be nice to have a plan for whoever is going to spend the money.
The, the $100,000 that you're referring to?
Yeah.
That is targeted more for development projects like ICG over on Westmoreland, Washington Events Hospital, the metro development, larger development projects that may require additional professional services that are beyond the current stack. So you could use the money for an engineering report, for example, to validate something that the hospital gave you. It could be for an environmental analysis.
Or maybe a traffic report?
Traffic study. It could be for a variety of things. And one of the reasons for leaving it general was it gave you that flexibility to, as projects progressed, that we could pull from that, that line item for contract for services. It's not targeted specifically to New Hampshire Avenue corridor initiative. Those initial efforts will be undertaken by existing staff with the support of the proposed part-time intern. And that's included or they're all, we're all geared up to start using that in our work plan. And includes everything from an expansion of the tour that we gave the other day for some of the officials to expanding the marketing materials, doing some video, doing some more proactive outreach in the area. continuing to work with the business owners, et cetera. But that would all be done in-house.
So the part-time interns' costs are in the difference in personnel costs in community development?
Correct, in 5,400.
So does it, I guess I'm wondering whether it would make sense to have a part-time intern or use a contract specialist who might focus on a plan for the corridor? I mean, it seems to me the level of skills that you want are more than what's going to be brought in by a planning intern. And you don't have anybody on the staff who's really doing economic development. So if we wanted something to happen here, would we be better off paying somebody $25,000 or $30,000 for a year to, you know, come up with a, a plan for, you know, analyzing the potential of the corridor, analyzing property ownership patterns, setting up a series of meetings, trying to bring people together, and working with the county, who has professional skills at that level rather than an intern?
I, I think we have those skills in-house. The proposed intern is to basically do a lot of the data research that is needed to continue those efforts.
So who are the in-house people going to be? Is that going to be Suzanne's?
No, that would be our senior planner, planner and our associate planner, both of whom have been working in the corridor today. The data analysis and the market study information that was presented the other day, for example, was all done in-house.
And the senior planner who did such a good job setting up the tour that the, that the county people tried to hire on the spot?
I was wondering whether a planner and an economic development specialist are not necessarily one and the same. You know, somebody who would go out and put together deals and try to, to bring partners together may be different than, than a person that does, you know, planning and analysis.
If you go through, if you have a moment, go through the listing of the, the to-do list for everyone?
Okay.
And a lot of it is, is marketing, it's design work, it's bringing people together, and working with the county's economic development staff to do the deals, because they're the ones that have the money, to work with the state highway administration to make some of those physical improvements that everyone identified as a priority, to work with the property owners to develop a cohesive group so that they could work together to resolve some of the crime issues or facilitate just general property maintenance code complaints on their own property. We had talked about the possibility of hiring another staff person and contracting that work out, but the skill set, again, is so broad that frankly, it doesn't make a lot of sense from our perspective, because we do have so many of those skills in-house, or that we have ready access to them, or we're hoping to have even more ready access to them at the county and the state level. Both Prince George's County and Montgomery County's planning staff have been very supportive of the efforts and are trying to identify ways that they can work with us. I always get his name wrong, David.
Edgerly.
Edgerly, over at this county economic development department, was very supportive, and, and we're hoping to sit down with him in the next month and his staff to identify, again, ways that we can work together to partner with them.
Colleen?
Who do we have on the staff then that would play the role of bringing in the actual businesses? Like, who would be the person who would come up with the list, like Stroh-Schneiders, for example? Get Stroh-Schneiders to come and, and build a, a facility, or put a facility in. And who would be the person who would package the deal that would say, you know, it would be this, this amount of retail space would be a good mix, and these are the kinds of things that the community would like to have there. And here would be the housing, and this is the kind of architect and developer that could come in and do this. And then, here, let me introduce you to the person who owns this property, and, and here's their interest in it.
We're taking a little different perspective. At least our approach is a little different in terms of working with the developer and not dealing with the business. Working with the developers that would be interested or have the capacity to do a project along New Hampshire Avenue, and working with them to increase their awareness of what the potential is for that particular corridor, and then have them go through and talk to the Stroh-Schneiders and things like that. There are a lot of plans in place already that identify some of the interests of the, the surrounding neighborhoods as far as the types of businesses or the, in general categories, as well as the type of housing that there is a need for. So we're hoping by working with a single guy, that it could, that we can be much more effective that way. From my personal experience and in working in other locations, it's very challenging and very expensive to go out and go knock on doors and get businesses to come into your community if you don't have. It's time-consuming, the success rate is very low, and without the financial resources to provide some of those incentives, i.e., I'll give you a great deal on a loan if you come here and it'll offset your construction costs, you don't have a lot of that same clout that you might have if you were Montgomery County, for example, and looking for a high-tech industry or some sort of medical press, or industry.
I, I understand that, I understand that, but I still think that there's a, there's a piece that's missing. And I don't think that in terms of just having the developer go out and define, you know, what the interests of the, of the community are, and let them go pick the businesses or go court the businesses, I think we could do more than that. And I, and I think actually that ultimately probably the value of us guiding the process by having the, the staff resources dedicated to that is that we, that we do drive that portion of the process where we identify who comes into the community and really try to court particular kinds of businesses. Tacoma Park is a particular kind of a place, and, and would be very particular about what businesses they would support in and along the corridor. And I would have to say that for my residents to, to see the city involved and engaged in the economic development process, that that's part of what their motivation is, to drive what kinds of stores. And I mean, I understand that, you know, we're, we don't own the property, and we're not the developers, and we don't get to dictate that, but certainly by being involved in the process and trying to make the, the matches and the marriages together beforehand, we do have significant influence.
I think we're talking, we're saying the same thing. I'm just looking at it from a different primary contact as opposed to, the primary contact being the individual or the firm that would be able to make it happen as opposed to the, the end user. We agree with you that people are very concerned, are very interested in knowing what's going on in their community and have a lot of opinions, a long wish, wish list, or a no longer do not wish list. But one of the things that I think my staff brings to the table is having an awareness of what that is, having the ability to go out into the community and talk with the neighborhood associations and help facilitate that conversation.
Joy?
What do you see on New Hampshire Avenue as the, the next most likely opportunity for economic development?
The, if, if you recall, when we started doing the priorities for the council objectives for this next two-year budget cycle, we had laid out a, a work plan, if you will, that was broken out into six-month periods or six-month increments. Just based on that, a lot of the initial work is going to be in terms of facilitating the conversation between the various entities to get everybody to agree that this is a priority and to identify how they can become a partner in that process.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying, and I do remember that, that timeframe. What I see over on Holton Lane is huge potential for economic development, and there's four retail spaces that are vacant. So if, if, if our city staff are capable of working with that developer and helping match them with businesses that would serve this community that they know, what steps are being taken to, to do that there?
At this point in time, at this point in time, it's not in our work plan because we have a variety of other projects that we're in the process of wrapping up. A lot, a lot of the New Hampshire Avenue stuff is, is still in the preliminary stages in terms of working with the businesses and pulling together the data and making those connections. Staff is working on the projects right now, and depending upon the outcome of the FY07 budget, that will then become part of their work plan, and that will be the next step in terms of being more proactive in terms of working with the property owners and identifying developers that would be appropriate and who are interested in that lot. The property in question that you're talking about now, half of it's for sale, the other half is not for sale. The half that is not for sale is one of our ongoing property maintenance code. You know, we've got them in court every three months. I wish it was a lot.
I'm not sure what you're talking about. I'm talking about Easy Storage.
Yeah, across the street from the four, the four parcels across the street from that.
No, I'm talking about the four retail spaces in Easy Storage.
Oh, but yeah, we're talking to him about different ways of marketing, but as is Mr. Mack, who's with the CDA.
I, I think that's a huge potential, especially with what the city is planning to do in streetscaping. That that, that area right there has a developer already willing to plunk down a building and accommodate what our shared vision of the community is, that we have pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use developments. I, I appreciate the New Hampshire Avenue tour. I think that was a good framework. But in terms of where we can get the most bang for our buck immediately, I see that as, as the spot. And I'm doing everything I can to help meet, meet them halfway. I think it, it would be helpful if somebody with economic development expertise could also bridge that gap. The, the projects that you talk about that may be ongoing and, and not yet completed, one thing that makes it difficult for me to think about allocating more money for gateway signage is that we haven't seen any gateway signage. We haven't even seen historic district emblems, which even though I wasn't that happy with the design of them, I, I did expect to see them by now. So I'm not sure that that's part of this budget that, you know, we have enough information to make a decision about. And then the last two projects that I hope very much come to completion soon are the Metropolitan Branch Trail and Carroll Avenue Streetscape. I know that we've done a lot of that coordination in-house and that there are some remaining issues, but is there any update you can provide on when we might see those to completion?
Carroll Avenue should be done within the month. It's, the projects will be wrapped up this, this fiscal year. Maple Avenue, the county conservation corps will begin work on that this month.
Tacoma Avenue?
For the Metropolitan Branch Trail.
On Tacoma Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. So you're saying that by June 1st, it should be done? Because we won't have our, or you're saying by the middle of June? It'd be great if we could have some of these things apparent before we have to vote on the budget.
Metropolitan Branch Trail is a, they are going to start the work in, this month in May. The funding is available through the end of June, and based on conversations I've had with the, the county, it probably will not be done until the end of June. We have additional grant funds that are included in the CIP and the special revenue thing for about $15,000 that will do some additional enhancements, but the primary work should be done by the end of this fiscal year. Carroll Avenue should be done by the end of May, but it depends on the weather and it depends on the timing of the contractors. But again, the plan is to get that done by the end of FY07, FY06, end of June.
Okay, and then back to the gateway signage. Can you give us some idea of when we might see some of the things that I think we've ordered, right?
They've been ordered. The order is on hold because the count, or the state, the state has changed the rules again, frankly, and we're trying to get some issues resolved regarding the gateway signs.
And the historic district markers as well?
Excuse me?
The historic district markers as well?
It's all part of the package. In terms of the actual fabrication, they'll do them as a whole.
Thank you. Just real quick, I wondered if, now that the Carroll Avenue streetscaping is about done, what the schedule is for resurfacing of Carroll Avenue? And.
I don't know the answer to, that's a state highway. We can contact the state highway and see if it's in the plans and when it's to be done.
Okay.
Way delayed. They're experiencing some funding issues.
I think that was a question that the council had received in a email query from a city resident. And I think there are a number of state roads that, that need the resurfacing, and it might be helpful, Barb, if we could get a, some kind of response from the state on all those state roads.
Can we get the, can we get the no in writing? Anything else?
I have one before we adjourn, but not on the subject. If you're ready, move on.
Well, this is the last item on the agenda.
This is about an upcoming agenda I wanted to.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. I, we've, I know we've asked you a lot of very intense questions, and because a lot of the most highest priority items that we're working on are, happen to be in your department, so I very much appreciate it. Thank you. What was your thing, Terry?
I just wanted to know, on June 5th, we're going to be talking about the bus shelters, and I wanted to know if we have invited the contractor to attend that session?
I think that that's probably still tentative. Yes, that's tentative, so we don't know for sure that we're going to be doing it on that evening.
Could we?
I'm sheltering, thank you.
Could we tentatively invite him?
Yeah, we can probably do that.
I think it would be important for.
Yeah, no, I think the intention was to have people there when we're talking about it, but I'm trying to be conservative and, and not overpromise, because we keep adding things to the agenda that are a bit more timely, and we have to get through budget before.
I'm sorry, I didn't display more confidence than you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.